Okay, okay, we're readjourning to our open session, which is now a study session. And this is a study session, excuse me, to report on career readiness program at Laguna Beach Unified School District. Dr. Mayberry, I'm going to introduce you to start.
Well, thank you, board members and cabinet and students. We appreciate the opportunity to kind of share this update on career education of where we're at and what we're working on. So I'm going to share my screen here with a little presentation that we'll do. And then, sorry, there we go. And so really, the purpose, the purpose of the study session again is to kind of look at, you know, the different things we're working on, where we're going, get feedback and your thoughts and, and kind of an update on that continuum of career education and what it looks like here. So as I move, sorry, I'm new to doing some of this in a virtual setting, but really, the purpose of career education, it really ties together the work we're doing. And the purpose of setting this all up is getting our kids ready for when they leave us, right? Post Laguna Beach High School, post Laguna Beach Unified. It really brings together the skills that kids have, the talents they have, the interests they have, developing all the way from the elementary age through middle and high school. And so we look at that, all the different activities and kind of take a strategic approach to it. And this is a new or increased emphasis area at our schools that we want to take a little bit of time to share and talk about today. And I have with me as a co-host, Kelly Shear. She's our Career Counseling Coordinator, her new position last year. That came from a K-12 Strong Workforce Program grant, which is a CTE, career-based grant from the state. So she's been with us for a little bit over a year. So she's going to kind of host with us, host with me today as we kind of walk through where we're at and hopefully answer questions and kind of share kind of this, what we think is really exciting pathways that we're developing for our students. So Kelly, you want to take a look here at the next slide and share a quick update?
Great. Well, I'm so excited to be here to talk to you about our career education program, which will just start in. It's never too early to start career exploration. Kids are asked at a very early age, the question, what do you want to be when you grow up? And so they start thinking about careers and occupations and jobs, and they mostly focus on ones that they see in their daily lives, like doctors, teachers, police officers. But as career educators, we need to capitalize on those young minds, how inquisitive they are, and provide opportunities for them to explore potential careers. At the elementary level, we want to start at a career awareness. We want to talk to students about what, why do people work? What's the purpose of jobs? And also, how does what they're learning in school relate to what they might do in their future career? Currently, we use programs at the elementary sites Thrively and Nepres to start promoting career awareness. We also use career presentations as another tool to expand career awareness. Outside of, we especially want to expand career awareness outside of those positions that they see in their daily lives. Next slide. This is our career education continuum, which is student-focused and expands from kindergarten through post-high school graduation. And so the continuum starts with career awareness, and that would be at the elementary level. Students would be engaged in things like field trips, career speakers, guest speakers, and then they would move into the next stage, which would be career exploration. This would typically happen about the middle school level. They would be involved in informational interviews, job shadowing, and then they would transition into that next stage of career preparation, would be mainly high school level, where they could participate maybe in an internship or a project with an industry expert, like our AER class at the high school. And then they transitioned into that last stage, which is career training. That would happen at the college level or workforce, if they were going straight into the workforce after high school graduation. And they'd have opportunities like apprenticeships, on-the-job training. If they were at college, it might be a clinical experience or another internship. And really, the goal of our continuum is to begin career awareness early and then increase that depth of knowledge as the students mature and move along towards high school graduation. And the ultimate goal of them developing a career plan, sorry, career plan for post-high school. Next slide.
So the framework that we use to kind of guide our work is really around these 12 essential elements of career technical education, career and technical education, that have for a long time been used more at the high school level. And now we're looking at it a little bit more globally, from elementary all the way through college. And that's been the purpose of a lot of the more recent career education-related grants, is making that connection all the way from the young age, you know, in elementary and younger, where Kelly was talking about, and all the way through college. And so these 12 elements, we kind of put them into essentially five categories that we look at and kind of align our system. So the first one, the first one being around student-centered activities and leadership. And then we also are working at curriculum instruction and professional development, how that, how that helps us provide the necessary activities for students. And then systems alignment and coherence, which Kelly is just an essential part of ensuring that for our students and our teachers and staff. And then industry and partnerships, right? Really connecting it to all this, the changing world, the changing skills that students need as they leave us and go into college career and beyond. So Kelly's going to kind of just get us started by looking at the first couple of ones here with student-centered and leadership.
So as Chad mentioned on the previous slide, we did take a look at those 12 essential elements and kind of grouped them by similarities into five different categories. So this is our student-centered, which incorporates four of those 12 essential elements: career exploration, student support, equity and access. So I just want to take a moment and pose a question to our board members. If you wanted to share with us what types of skills you felt were valuable in your individual career fields? Would anyone like to share maybe some of those skills that you found really valuable as you matured through your career path?
Being well organized.
Yes.
Collaboration, communication, sales. Creative thinking.
Yes. The four Cs, part of the four Cs.
Yeah.
Great. Well, and I agree, those are all skills that we definitely want to make sure that we are providing opportunities for students to develop those. And our student-centered component here of these essential elements really focuses on our career education program, offering activities, events and courses that students want, but that will help them explore potential career fields, like the district-wide career roundup that we had last spring, that gave the students an opportunity to explore a plethora of opportunities. We also want to work to ensure that there's multiple entries to our career development program at all levels, so that students can access the career development program at any point, at any level throughout our district. And so we make sure that programs are available to all schools, like career presentations or the Nepres system. We also work on providing career counseling to all of our students, so that they have professional help in developing that career plan. So at the elementary level, we use Thrively. At the middle school, we use MyNext Moves. And then at the high school, we use California Career Zone. And there's just an overall increased focus on making sure that all students have access to our career development opportunities. Next slide. So this is our category number two, leadership. This focuses on two of the 12 essential elements: leadership at all levels, and then also promotion, outreach and communication. So this one, the first part of that is focusing on leadership. So we want to provide opportunities for our students to develop critical leadership skills that are going to be used in whatever their future career path comes to be. And so, for instance, we're providing an opportunity for our middle school and our high school students to participate in the Vital Link Student Leadership Series, which will be happening over the course of five weeks in November and December. And so it will give our students opportunities to work with industry experts to really hone in on what leadership skills are necessary in certain career paths. We also want to ensure that our, that we communicate and market our programs with a consistent message to all of our stakeholders. And one new thing that will be coming in is OCDE has hired a marketing expert to work with the district, so that we can have a consistent county-wide message around our career education efforts. And then we also want to make sure, as part of this initial, this element, that we promote the new career tools that are available to our students to work on career development, like Program Finder and Talent Ed are both new programs that have just come up that we are introducing to our students.
Kelly, I have a quick question. Is the Vital Link Student Leadership Series, that's new. I'm familiar with Vital Link and their work. Is that new to Laguna Beach High School?
So in the past, they offered an in-person event in the spring. And yes, we did, we have participated in that in the past, but because of COVID, they had to cancel the in-person event. And so they kind of revitalized it into this five-week series. It'll all be virtual, and students will have, instead of it only being a one-day event, now it's going to be this series of activities that they'll be doing within, connecting with industry professionals through panel discussions and different other activities that will just be done on the students' own timetable, knowing that all districts had different kinds of schedules right now with COVID. So they didn't want to have things set at special times, so that students will work at the activities for each week when it's available to them.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next kind of theme here is around curriculum instruction and professional learning experiences. And so this is similar to what we do in instructional services already. Obviously, it carries over a lot into different subject areas. But a couple of kind of unique things about this, when we're thinking through career education, is really around using current labor market information and industry standards and integrating that into courses or classes, or taking the skills necessary in there and integrating it into, into the classes all the way through elementary and middle school. We also, in looking at the curriculum instruction, where, you know, obviously at the high school, there are very specific kind of CTE career-focused classes. But at the middle school, we're taking those electives and really adding those career skills, sometimes career exploration to those, and seeing how those can fit. The, the high school also, we recently purchased Portfolio through the same K-12 Strong Workforce Program grant as something where kids can kind of really demonstrate their skills. A lot of the colleges use this, are starting to use this a lot more as well, where you think about beyond like just the resume that kids have, or just an essay that that kids have. But like, how can they really show the skills that they have, not just for career, but for colleges? So that's becoming, hopefully, something that will continue to grow in the next few years, as we get that started. We also have the two different dual enrollment and articulation agreements, where kids are getting early college credit. And although that certainly helps get kids ready and taking these college-level courses at the high school level, it's also really important to make sure that they are ready to, are on a track or pathway that allows them to graduate on time, or whatever they do when they leave us, that they have those skills. It's not something that they're doing for an extended amount of time beyond a typical college experience. And then we also, like, I think Kelly talked a little bit earlier about Vital Link. There's a lot of different professional development resources that are out there. And it's not just about conferences and workshops, it's also about advisory boards. There's advisory boards for, for each of the pathways and some of the other pathways that we don't even have on campus. And so trying to get teachers involved in those, sometimes kids as well, but really getting our staff and teachers connected to the industry professionals, so that they can integrate those kind of current skills that kids need in the career.
I have a quick question, sorry. Chad, is Portfolio used by the community colleges? Do we know if that's a tie-in? Because that would be a great building block for students to not only go to university, but to our community, local community colleges.
Yeah, so well, interestingly, Canvas and Portfolio essentially connected in recent years. And so, as you know, colleges use Canvas, and now Portfolio essentially being a part of that and having a direct link to it, that is becoming more and more utilized at the college level.
That's great. I just want to make sure our students, no matter what path, whether it's community college or a four-year university, that we're, they're taking with them these accomplishments in the virtual portfolio.
Yeah, if you want to speak to how they actually can carry it with them when they leave us, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add a little bit to it. So Portfolio actually partnered with the California Community Colleges first. And so it's been rolled out to all California community colleges, actually before they started working on K-12 and rolling it out to our level. So most community colleges in Orange County have introduced it to their students already. I can't really speak outside of Orange County, but they did have access to it. And then it also, the wonderful part about Portfolio is, as Chad mentioned, it's linked with Canvas. But the Portfolio is free to the student. We've paid for them to have their account, and it's free for the rest of their life. So even if they're in their 40s and they're making a career change, for some reason, they can utilize all of that information that they've put into Portfolio to possibly get jobs. Also, employers, connect with Portfolio when they're looking for employers. So again, a person later in life would still be able to utilize Portfolio, because we provided it to them while they were here in the district.
That's great. Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
And then.
Question? This one, or you did leave it? I just had a question on the advisory boards. So are students observe those or they participate? I was, how do they do that?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Okay. So the, the industry advisory boards that are referenced on this slide are for teachers. So it's an opportunity for our teachers to come together with college instructors and industry experts in each of those pathways, so that we can work on that system alignment to ensure that what we're teaching in our high school CTE courses is what either will happen in college courses, if they continue in that same pathway, or if they go straight into the workforce, that they'll have the skills that are necessary to work in that industry right out of high school. So the industry advisory boards that are referenced there are focused for professional development for our teachers.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we do have with our grants, whether it's CTIG or the Perkins Grants, those CTE grants, we do have students that are on those boards, along with teachers and administrators and industry professionals, that they're a part of that, those, those meetings that happen every year.
Thank you.
And so then, one of the, this, this was really, was one of the last, latter ones here with the system, around systems alignment and coherence. This is really the part that the administrator, administratively, behind the scenes, we're really trying to make sure we're doing that, we're working through continuous improvement. And it's outcome-based accountability. So developing different metrics, some of which are in this. And then we'll be posting this presentation with the links in it, and you'll be able to see some of the different metrics that we are using. But really, at the heart of it is, is the Career Counseling Coordinator. In our case, it's Kelly, Kelly Shear, who's just been a tremendous role in really making the connections and not just the connections and alignments within Laguna Beach, but each district in Orange County has a similar role. And now the college, community colleges are also adding that. And so really, it's, it's creating this unique, unique connection between K, really a K-14 connection in, in Orange County that very few other counties have in California. And so that has just been an essential part of really getting this going and aligned in a kind of coordinated, strategic way that probably wasn't possible prior. We obviously also look at enrollment data. We look at similar, you know, we've shared data before. We're looking at different special populations of students, are students, students have access? Is there equity in where kids are and who's, who's enrolling in these courses? As you know, the dashboard, maybe a year or two ago, a couple of years ago, had that College and Career Indicator, which has some of these things around the CTE completer status, along with other data that really looked at what, how do we prepare kids for college and career and measure that? Another exciting piece with the Orange, the Orange County Department of Ed, which helps lead and support a lot of the work that Kelly does, is they have these task force managers developing kind of a common language in a region. And so they continue to look at the different ways to, we're all speaking the same language. So we're not here saying one thing, they go to college, or they go into the industry, and they have to essentially relearn a language. So I guess the, I, you know, as I think of Kelly's position as a coordinator, you know, in the past, I don't know if the, anybody, the board members, but some, there have been some career centers that's been around for a while, or, or a career counselor, we've had one at the high school. Is that something anybody here has had in the past or utilized a career center when they're in high school or college?
I did, I did. We used to have one in Laguna, the YMCA ran it downtown.
I used, I used the one at Texas A&amp;M, went to college.
Great.
And that, the, those, that experience and the value of that is really what we're, we're trying to connect all the way through our different grade spans. And, and so it's not, kids are not thinking about it just when they get to college, right? They're, they're ready and they're thinking through their strengths and thinking through their skills to make a decision, whatever pathway they want to take when they do leave us.
Part of the thing that's really impressive is the county partnering with all the high schools. I think that's been the big change in the last two years with the Strong Workforce Grant. And now that community college, I just think that common language and that articulation is going to be really important for all kinds of students in all different roles they want to take, to really have opportunity for them in career development. So I, because I'm familiar with the department at OCDE, who does work on that, and Kathy and all that, you know, they're doing a great job. So Kelly, we're happy to have you onboard here at Laguna Beach High School.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here. So this is our last category, industry and partnerships. This incorporates two of the 12 essential elements: sustained investment and funding through mutual agreements, and then also strong partnerships with industry. And the real focus of this category is on maintaining current agreements. Sorry, can we go forward one? Sorry, so they'll see, okay, there we go. I'm sorry. So this, this category really focuses on maintaining those agreements that we already have with college and with industry, like regional workforce advisory boards and also college, higher ed advisory boards. And those mutual agreements are important to maintain, because that is the way that we ensure that our CTE programs are aligned with college and industry. We also are working to ensure that we keep getting funding for our career education efforts by continuing to apply for CTE grants like the K-12 SWP, which is a regional consortium between K-12 and our college partners. And we also, sorry, we are also engaging with our college and industry partners to ensure that we have system alignment and that we're providing work-based learning opportunities for our students, like field trips to businesses or career presentations by industry experts, with really our ultimate goal being that students are ready for industry. And to do that, we have to have partnerships with industry. Next slide.
So that kind of wraps up really the look at where we're at and some of the things that we're working on. This, this slide here has obviously some very key resources that if you want to take a little bit deeper look at it, we're going to post this up on the district website with all the links and the data and some, some of the outcomes that we look at. But if there's a little bit of time available, just want to open it up to questions or thoughts that anybody wants to share.
I was just wondering what the challenges have been for you guys in relations, maybe to developing business relationships, or any, any of the challenges in building all of this amazing work for our students?
Um, I, I think personally, I, I had a little bit of a challenge when I first got here, because I was obviously new to Laguna Beach, but I was also new to Orange County. I relocated not very far, Riverside County, but I love talking to people. I love networking. I love getting together and exchanging ideas. So I very early joined the Laguna Chamber of Commerce and started to network with our local businesses, because those are people that we have a vested interest in the success of our students in our district. A lot of times, they're, you know, neighbors or their parents or friends or whatever. So we want to connect and see what resources we can utilize from our community. And then also to expand out, knowing that not all of our students will stay in Laguna. And we want them to understand the process of networking outside of their immediate area, which is one reason Portfolio is going to be so important to our students, because it's a natural opportunity for them to, to network. Also, having our regional advisory boards, because they pull from everybody throughout Orange County. So I'm at the table with businesses are in Anaheim and Santa Ana, Los Alamitos, you know, and then further south, San Clemente. So it really gives me an opportunity to hear about opportunities that are happening outside of our immediate vicinity of Laguna, because a lot of our students may end up in some of our surrounding communities. So that's a, some of the things that I've been working on to try to build those relationships with our industry.
Thank you so much for all the work you've put into this.
You're welcome.
Any other board members have questions or comments? It's hard to see you all with the little screens. Maybe we can stop sharing the screen, Dr. Mayberry?
I have a comment, or just a.
Thank you.
Really hard to know this at this point, but as we've expanded this, starting elementary and working up, particularly at the high school level, do you find that students are adjusting what a college major might be based on what they've learned about potential careers?
Good question. That is a really good question. We don't have a lot of data, mainly because my role was new to the district. There wasn't really anybody here prior to me, you know, having this concerted effort to kind of look at career education, kindergarten through 12th grade. I can tell you that there are statewide, if we look at California, there are far more students that are continuing on in whatever their CTE pathway in high school was at the community college or at the university level with that being their major. So there aren't career pathways, you know, at universities, but you could major in graphic design, and maybe you finish Scott Whitkop's graphic design pathway here. So you're technically still continuing on in that same pathway as it being your major. But so statewide, there's a lot of data to support students transitioning from whatever their CTE pathway was in high school to that next level of education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, actually, I have a comment and a question sort. So this, I was a student here. I've, I've had experience in these classes. I've been in Mr. Whitkop's class, were amazing opportunities there. As well as I was lucky enough to participate in AER, and that was a truly inspiring class. I think that this program has done a great job with giving students an introduction to just people who have real experience. I think it's one thing to, you know, see slides, you see presentations, but to get that hands-on work is, is something else. And also, I see that a lot of this stuff is kind of, is very career-oriented. I was wondering if you, if you, if you work with stuff like social emotional strengths and how to foster that, is I think that's also a very important aspect of having that, like, determination, confidence, to, you know, choose a career and to be confident in yourself and yourself and your abilities to follow that career.
And, and that you bring up a really great point, Soren. Thank you. We, we look at interests, what a student likes, and frequently, those interests are things that they have strengths in. Like, we want to do something we are good at, right? We gravitate towards that usually. So strengths and talents that we possess are, are a very key point to career development. Equally as important is, is interest, because I tell students all the time, like, you could be really great at something, but if you don't enjoy doing it, you're not going to enjoy your job every day. And I love what I do. I love to go to work. I love to work with students and help them develop their career plan. And I want that for all of my students as well. So we have to combine both. And so that strength part does pull in those social emotional parts. So for instance, like, if you were at Thurston for middle school, right, you did Strength Finder. That's a huge component of pulling out what those emotional capacities are that our students have. And they, they come out, and we then can build upon that and help students find how they can use, for instance, empathy. You know, if you're a very empathetic person, you're going to thrive in an area where you're providing social services, supports to people. So we definitely want to look at those social emotional traits and strengths that people have.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? I'm, I wanted to, I've noticed that the concurrent enrollment with IVC, and I think Saddleback too, right? But that seems to expand, and the offerings have expanded over the last several years. And I think I'm really, I find that the students, there's varying, like, wasn't there like a history of rock and roll or something that was offered this, some, like, not only from kind of your standard requirement to something really interesting, that I think can delve into kids, students' likes and dislikes and their passions. So I'm grateful for that, too.
Yes, that the history of rock and roll is our dual enrollment offering with IVC for the spring semester coming up. So students had the opportunity to, we're actually still in the process of enrolling, but they had that opportunity. And that's something that we've definitely grown, my position has helped grow. Dual enrollment didn't really exist, you know, over a year. Dual enrollment didn't really exist, you know, over a year ago, like, and now we've had a, we've had a course now for three semesters in a row. And that's going to be our plan is to continue. When I first got here, I noticed that dual enrollment didn't, wasn't very successful that first semester because we were trying to do it after bell because it couldn't fit into the bell schedule with the type of schedule that we had at the high school. A college instructor just couldn't make that work. And so I, I worked with IVC to basically get permission to offer all of our dual enrollment as an online option. And this was even prior to COVID, which now is kind of forced that hand. But I had in looking at what was going on that first semester with dual enrollment last year, realized like this isn't working for our students to try to do it after school or to try to do it in the bell. And so we worked out an agreement with IVC to offer all of our dual enrollment going forward as online so that it would work better with our students' schedule.
Oh, that's excellent. That's great, Kelly. That's wonderful. Anyone else have any questions or comments? I'm looking at all the boxes. Well, thank you to Kelly and to Dr. Mayberry. That was really excellent. And we're going to post that slide deck up online. It has links and all the hyperlinks I noticed. So people, families, parents, students and board members can go ahead and look at those if they'd like to look in further. So thank you very much. So we don't start our open session until six. So should we just take like a five minute break? But don't, don't leave this meeting. Right? Is that fine? Somebody nod yes to me. So you can turn off your camera. You can turn, make sure you turn off your mute, your mute is mute, camera off, and we'll see you in five minutes. Victoria, are we recording now? Do I need to have you pull us back up on our break? Are we recording?
We're still recording.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you. If people are within earshot, you need to come back on and turn your video on. We need to start at six. Thank you. Uh, we, we are recording continually, so I'm going to go ahead and call our open session back to order. Um, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and I do have the flag in my screen. So if everyone could please stand. Right there. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Prior to the study session, we had a closed session and I have no report out of closed session. Um, and now we'll be adopting the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. So may I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? So moved. Thank you. All second, okay. And then a roll call to adopt the agenda, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normingen?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And I forgot to ask the student board rep, who will be voting tonight? I apologize.
I will, yeah.
Okay, Johanna, okay. I will remember next time. Do you want to vote on the adoption of the agenda?
Sure.
You just, you can vote now. Yes, thanks, Johanna. Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, so motion carries five zero. Uh, we have no recognitions tonight. And now we have number six on our, wait, sorry. I have a computer and sheet, so I apologize, everyone. We have public comment on non-agenda items. And if you are in the attendees group, you would raise your hand in order to be put in live to speak. And Dr. Winston will be managing that tonight. So please raise your hand if you have a public comment on non-agenda items. So our first one is Amy Kramer. Okay. You can unmute and talk.
Okay, thank you so much for taking my, my call here. While parents worried about what the trimester plan would mean from a pedagogical standpoint, they did decide to accept it because they want their kids back on campus and in school. So why are we not back in when the board and administrators promised we would be after the closures were lifted? Some of the things that we've heard is that it interferes with the continuity of the schedule or that we waited too long to purchase the proper PPE or that teachers do not want to come back. I'm working in Capital Unified. I can tell you that we're back. And for those students who are back in class, the difference is incredible. Students who are unattended at home in their rooms, on the couch and in backyards are now sitting in desks, able to ask for help and have concepts explained in person. We have a little more time between classes to sanitize desks and, desks and chairs and doorknobs where we just spray things down and wipe it up and it's done. The doors are left open, masks are left on, students are changing classrooms following arrows, social distancing, and they eat their snacks and their lunch outside. The teachers are definitely the heroes in all of this. They have their computer screens, monitors and cameras all set up so that they can engage the in-class and online students. Again, very doable because the teachers have their space and pacing all set up. Please listen to the teachers and parents so that we can all work as a team and get this done. Parents have already given up some of their expectations. Students have certainly shown that they are doing their part and the teachers have their own common sense requests. So let's all work together, tweak the plan and get kids back in school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised for public comment on non-agenda items? I do not see any. Okay, so I will close that segment of the public comment. Thank you. And we're going to go to our reports. And we're going to start with our student board reps and I'll let you guys go in the order you would like to report.
Um, I can go first. I'm going to
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay, so we emailed each principal again this week and kind of caught up on what's been happening at all the schools. So El Moro Principal Duddy said that they're doing a four-day in-person model and it's going well. The only challenge is that the masks are a little bit difficult to like handle with them, but they're working through the challenges and they're having their fifth grade student council elections on November 3rd. Um, and but sadly the boot blast, this is the first year they're not going to do it, but they're going to allow students to wear costumes to school on the 29th. So that'll be fun for them. Um, and then for Top the World, um, they are, next week, they're going to start virtual goal-setting conferences with parents. And for Halloween to kind of keep it fun, they're going to have a virtual costume parade for the students. And she said that things are going really well and the students are happy. For Thurston, their canvas has been all set up for each student and they have ASB elections going on through Canvas as well as their clubs pages. So students can view them and join through Canvas. And then at the high school, uh, actually for both TMS and LBHS, we're integrating tech like cameras and microphones so that teachers can, um, when we do go back in person, that the teaching for the online students can be very seamless and just making it best as possible for the teachers to go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Soren, will you be reporting next?
Yes, just add a little bit to what Johanna said. I think it's important to note that we will be working with the elected student representatives from Thurston, as well as El Moro and Top of the World to give, to get, get their voices heard in a, in a larger setting. And we also use social media to reach out to the student body and feel, feel their thoughts on returning to school. A high majority of students would like to go back to school. We asked our question after first trimester and I have students who would like to go back after first trimester. We did not ask going back right now. We did also open our direct messages up to students. And a lot of students had very insightful comments. We also had some parents reaching out to us. And a lot of people feel that there's too much screen time. Higher productivity will happen in person. And there were, there were obviously some concerns. I think some people are concerned about health, but I'm, I'm sure as they've looked at the that all being mitigated. And overall, we're very, we think that a hundred students like to go back. So as a representative of the students, I think all students would like to see us back in person as soon as possible. And as an independent student, I think it's important to take this in a rational way and keep concerns that are, are, are live, that concerns are realistic, open as well as to do some constructive manner. So we are not acting emotionally or irrationally and possibly not, not acting in a purposeful manner. I think it's important to stress that, that we need to act in a purposeful manner throughout this process and all work together to, to get back to where we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Soren, for the report. We're happy to have you guys onboard. Okay, our next one is our bargaining units and we'll start with CSEA and Margaret Water.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that CSEA continues to work collaboratively with our administration. And as you'll see, we have our MOU or tentative agreement with, for this evening. Also, a huge shout out to Thurston and to the high school for their support to El Moro and to Top of the World. During our reopening, the staff members have filled in a lot of spots that helped in moving students around and all of the things that were required to make that happen. Also, we, we continue as we've opened this, this school district as the elementary, at least at TOW and what I'm hearing from El Moro, that it's a flexible situation that continues to be reviewed by the principals and administration to have protocol in place, which is wonderful because, you know, a simple thing like car pickup can really take time and requiring that students keep their social distance, the things that are needed. I know for myself, which I have quite a few different classes, being an encore support and our instructional assistants and our support staff, whether it be music or other roles that they may have that have taken on the encore support are really supporting the students with the projects that are coming from the teacher or their own classroom design as needed. Also, one more thing I would like to say at TOW, the mask issue, when we went, started it on Monday, we thought with the little ones, it might be a concern, but it really isn't. A gentle reminder and the masks on. So it seems to be working just fine on the mask for K through second grade. And with that, I'd also like to say that part of the RTI program is already in process and we, I especially am pulling kids. So that's a great step forward, getting back to the normalcy of how things work during the school year. So thank you very much, administration and school board for your support through this.
Thank you, Margaret. Appreciate it. And now LaBufa, Sarah? You have to unmute, Sarah.
Okay, good evening. As we look forward to physically reopening our secondary campuses, our secondary teachers are asked to continue to produce distance learning along with in-person instruction and are being trained on the best, the best practices in doing that. We support the ongoing efforts and edits in the secondary in-person schedule to ensure the safety of our students and staff and the continuity of instruction. The teachers are the instructional experts who are providing the best instruction and a rigorous curriculum and will continue to do so regardless of the teaching model. I asked teachers at TOW Elementary School that despite all the changes and the new routines and wearing a mask all day and teaching with a mask on, said, what gives you joy as a teacher? And these are some of my responses from teachers. What gives me joy is seeing the kids play, laugh and be silly together again. Seeing my students in person and hearing how much they love being back in person. I love my class. I am so impressed with the way kindergartners are handling all the new rules and regulations with excitement and huge smiles under their masked faces. I love the notes kids send me. Hearing my kids' comments, this makes so much more sense. I love being at school. School is fun. I'm so glad to be here. A fifth grader told the teacher today, she didn't want to go home at the end of the day because she was learning so much. I've been, another teacher said, I've been inspired by how well my little ones are adjusting to wearing masks, social distancing, temperature checks. And they've made such progress being back in the classroom and seeing their smiles in person brightens my day every day. Everything about school is bringing me joy now, right now. I love being back. The kids, the energy feeds my soul. As does the authentic learning that I see happening every day. I love that I get to work with small cohorts right now because I have a chance to work one-on-one during instruction time with each student each day. So I am so grateful to the elementary teachers who've led the way and are finding the joy in being with their students again in person.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, Sarah. That's wonderful to share. I love that. Um, that was lovely. Okay, our next is our board members will be reporting and they'll report on any activities they participated in related to district business. Uh, Dr. Kelly, your report?
I was very fortunate today to travel with the superintendent and trustee Perry to Top of the World School. What a delight. Happy kids. Happy kids, engaged kids, uh, wonderful faculty, uh, the new principal. What a wonderful school district that we have. I can't say more about it. Margaret Warner, I saw her in a new role, you know, walking around with young kids, following her like a mother duck and being very engaged with everything that she was doing. I just, I, I, I'm just so impressed. I, I feel so, so happy with all of the, um, uh, protocols that are in place to protect our kids and to keep them safely distanced. Uh, it was fun seeing them with all of their, their mask, uh, uh, on and, uh, and, and no one, no one seemed to be, to care about it. I asked the principal, principal about, uh, do any of the kids have problems with wearing these masks? And she said, no, that she's only had one student that she's had to call home about. And, uh, the parents were very supportive of helping her, uh, get this student, uh, to adhere to wearing a mask. So I think, uh, our, our teachers and staff need to be, uh, to be complimented on what a great job they have done on reopening, uh, the elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Board member Perry, your report, please.
Ditto to Dr. Kelly. It was, it was so joyful to see, actually see the kids today. One of the, we visited, um, Beth Sands in music with kindergartners and they can't sing because that's one of the rules now and they have to keep their masks on. So she's very creative and had them banging out rhythms with their sticks and they just look so happy pounding away. Um, and I just want to compliment her for being creative and figuring out a way to still have music when the kids have to keep their masks on and can't sing. It was delightful to meet Dr. Hatch. I had seen her before on the screen, but not actually met her and she is just as lovely as everyone said. Very impressive, like Dr. Kelly was saying, all the protocols in place. I mean, down to only two students in the bathroom at a time and how they keep that organized and can tell. And how quickly they clean things to all the different entrances and exits so they can get up and in smoothly. I was very, very impressed. So thanks. Oh, and I also wanted to say, uh, a big thank you to Mr. Dixon for all the work he and his group have done with busing. I actually got some very nice emails and calls about that. He's gotten almost everybody back in, just a few left and he's being very creative about it. So fingers crossed, everybody will be in for morning and afternoon and that we can make this go smoothly when Thurston goes back too. Thanks.
Thank you, board member Perry. Uh, board member Vickers, your report, please.
Got it. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say no to seeing that, uh, Corporal Ashton received his promotion. And so we will be, uh, losing him as our, one of our school resource officers. And I hope that we have a chance in the future to, um, express our gratitude for what he's done with that program that, uh, how, uh, Dr. Valoria worked so long with the city to make that come about. And it's now we have two, so we're not left without any, but it's, uh, it's been such a important link to our students and the, and their families and all the support that he's given. Hearing what, uh, Dr. Kelly and member Perry said about the school visit, and I haven't had my opportunity yet to visit the school. Uh, it, it says to me that all the adults involved, whether it's the teachers, the principals, other staff, uh, and their parents have been positive then in what students need to do with these new routines and new protocols, which makes the kids, um, accept it. So we, I'm really grateful that we have had all that positive, uh, support representing that. And then it just becomes the standard and it sounds like it's going very well. But that's to me where the credit would lie on, uh, helping the students adapt so well. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Vickers. Board member Normandin, quick Normandin, your report, please.
I thank you. One, I want to do my little act of kindness. So splashing your life as a garland of beautiful deeds. Buddha. And share it with you all. Um, I attended the community coalition meeting. One, uh, the Boys and Girls Club had shared that they had closed down after a COVID-19 outbreak. And then, um, we got to, uh, receive a demonstration from the University of California, San Francisco on a tool that they created around grit X, which is, um, available online or as an app. It's free. It's kind of like a therapy in your pocket, a therapist in your pocket, maybe. It doesn't store any data. Doesn't have any barriers for entry. And, uh, it's a tool to support tweens, teens, young adults and even parents too. I encourage everyone to, uh, add it to your toolkit for support. Even has a breathing room so you can take time practicing breathing or meditation. Again, it's called grit, G R I T X. I wanted to take just a moment and share my condolences of those in our community, our staff and teachers who've had a loss of loved ones or been impacted by COVID-19. Our thoughts are with you. Also want to tell the 10% of the community that is impacted by remote education, which are students and their parents that were aware of, um, I, I don't know if other board members receive the same amount of mental health comments, but I, I just wanted to say here and responding back in general, that I'm aware of the mental health related issues that social distancing and remote learning can cause. The increases in anxiety and stability the pandemic has caused. I want to remind everyone that they believe they or their family members at risk, that there are resources through the school site, counselors, as well as at the district level of Dr. Keller and Ms. White. Outside of the schools, we have amazing colleges that have mental health facilities as part of their hospitals, such as UCLA, UCI. And we have our local hospitals, Chalk admission. And you can contact them for referrals. And if you are worried about the, your loved one is at risk, please just go to the ER. Don't hesitate. They will help assess that. And then that kind of ties back into the fact that grit X came up, they're already developing it, but how important they thought it was, especially now as a tool to help support that and help parents, support parents, uh, the family as a whole. Um, Dr. Keller yesterday also spoke of the students that are thriving in our current distant learning environment. And he spoke of the professional experts, um, as part of, that are, are at our district that are working to determine what's works of all for those students. And, and really looking at practices of how you adjust education and you know, what, uh, you might add or subtract based on that to optimize, uh, those, those student successes who are really thriving right now. Um, and it was so nice to hear, it was such a nice, optimistic, wonderful thing to hear. As Dr. Keller often asks. And I just want to thank all of the, um, excellent professional experts that we have at all four sites at our district. You guys not only work together collaboratively, you network with experts throughout the state and, um, and even I guess throughout the nation sometimes. And you do that all to just provide the best classroom experiences, no matter the modality of it, just the best classroom experiences for our students. But we appreciate you guys, we rely upon you. And to the teachers at both of the elementary schools right now, though, the frontline workers. You know, and with the students that are special education students, you guys are our heroes. Thanks for all that you're doing. Really appreciate you.
Thank you, board member Normandin. Uh, so for my report, I just, number one, I wanted to congratulate Corporal Ashton as well. I read that in the paper, very exciting. Uh, he will be missed. He's been a great asset to our high school and our, all our schools. Um, I have noticed that we have CSEA classified staff retiring. And because of COVID, we're not having a big celebration in the room. But I just want to say those people are integral parts of how this district functions. Donna left in the district office, Terry Holloway, we're, we're losing Dawn Brown, Gwen at Thurston. I wish them all well in their retirement, but I just want to acknowledge that we don't have this in-person opportunity to give you flowers and cheer you on. But please know that I am so grateful for all the work you do. You are the face of the district many times that people encounter, so. Um, and my final comment was, I really wanted to take a minute to, uh, thank Dr. Winston and her team for their really hard work. I'm not sure if everybody comprehends that we have six different education models going on in our district. Virtual academies, we have the trimesters, we have online, we have, and that takes a lot of work for our deputy superintendent and all of that team to make sure that our teachers are prepared, our content is prepared. Everyone has the right, um, uh, wifi, the instructional models. So I just want to really shout out to Dr. Winston and her team for making it work and also meeting the needs of people who have different issues as they come along the way, but we are the different models and we're going to function differently and we're going to have different content. But I'm grateful for, uh, Dr. Winston and her team. So that's what I wanted to share. And our next item is our superintendent report, Dr. Valoria.
I'm going to save my comments for the, our opening presentation.
Okay. And then, uh, we have our cabinet members, Dr. Winston, report, are you saving?
Thank you. I just want to say one thing, which is, I, I just wanted to thank Dr. Mayberry and Kelly Shear for the study session presentation on career education. Kelly is amazing. She's only in the second year of her role as a career counseling coordinator here, but she has helped to, to develop, uh, so many wonderful programs and opportunities for our students. Work so well and collaboratively with our staff. So we're just great. Like her here.
Thank you. And Mr. Dixon, you're next on the reports.
Yeah, thank you. I just really briefly, I really appreciate the comments from Sarah and Margaret. We've made a lot of changes operationally wise and, um, the flexibility of our certified and classified staff has been instrumental to making sure everything works as smooth as we could possibly hope. So thank you guys for those comments. It's really refreshing and, and great to hear.
Thank you. Okay. Our first item is, sorry, I have to get a mile. We are nine A and this is, uh, public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code three, five, four, seven point five and CCR title five, section 15449 and the 2020, 2021 negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association, CSEA. And it's Laguna Beach, chapter number 131. Um, Dr. Winston, should I do public comment first? Should do that first.
Open the hearing.
Yes, sorry. The hearing. Okay, so we're going to be opening the public hearing for comments. And for those of you that are attendees, please raise your hand if you would like to speak and we will bring you into the panel meeting. I don't see any hands raised.
Peggy, Peggy and Lisa.
Yes.
I had a concern share with me that at the last meeting, uh, some people tried to get on to make a comment and, and didn't succeed. So just, um, whatever we can do to, to double check. I think we were trying to do that last time, but I, I explained that we're new to this system, but I said that I would pass that on. Thank you.
We have two people checking for raised hands, so we're trying to be extra careful.
These are folks that tried to phone in to use that.
And I think all the description is on, there's all different, um, modalities they can dial in or log in, so.
When I asked about it to Ms. Weber, I think it was that maybe they were just doing nine and not star nine.
So. It's in the directions exactly, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So no hands raised, I just want to confirm. Correct. Okay. So are there any board comments or questions? Or do I close? I'm so sorry. Do I close the public hearing first? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Um, I'm going to close the public hearing. We saw no raised hands and now are there any board comments or questions?
We'll do those at action. So just close the hearing and then.
Okay, so I just want to note, this was on my little chart. Victoria, I'm going to talk to you after this meeting. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, okay, I'm going to X that off. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, so now we're on nine B. And this is public disclosure of proposal in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code three, five, four, seven point five and CCR title five, section 15449 and 2020, 2021 compensation proposal with non-represented classified and certificated employees. We will open the public hearing for any comments. Please raise your hand if you are an attendee and would like to speak to this item. I'm sensing no raised hands.
I see no hands raised.
I'm just double checking. Okay, we will now close the public hearing. So thank you. And we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Just for people to notice, we are using A and B for some soft, some procedural, uh, things we need to do in this software. So our now our consent will be C through N. Do I have that right? I have, for some reason, my two different charts.
C through N.
C through N, okay, thank you. Okay. Um, and just to explain what consent is, parliamentary procedure provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. All matters listed under the consent sound calendar will be enacted by the board in one motion. Superintendent and staff recommend approval and or ratification of all consent calendar items. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar at the request of a board member and acted on separately. Right now, we can have public comment. Please raise your hand if you're an attendee, if you would like to comment on our consent items. C through N. We do have one hand. Sherry Morgan, uh, you're able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Um, I wanted to comment on item, um, within, oh, technology in the agenda. Um, about the music and the contract with OC Music and Dance. Um, I've attended a couple of the, or the last meeting where they presented the school, the program and, uh, presented their ideas of working with the district and I think that's wonderful. I would like to encourage the district to continue pushing forward a robust arts and education program, including music. Um, also, I wanted to address the comment that, um, music was not allowed outside because the California, um, Music Education Association, they, um, there was new guidelines released last week, I believe, on October 14th, from the Health Department, the California Department of Health on music education. And it does say that if you are, uh, singing, you can be outside and be able to, with safe social distancing and masks wearing, um, as, as off, as much as possible. The kids could sing together. Um, additionally, it talks about how you can have, um, instruments being played, not wind instruments, but it does include brass. Uh, and I would certainly like to see our district take our music program and put it back into full as much of an effort as possible so that they can have a broader experience in the arts. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Any other hands raised for public comment on consent? I don't see any. Okay, thank you. Uh, does any member which, board member wish to pull an item off consent?
I don't want to pull.
A lot of squares tonight, you guys. Okay. Okay, so you don't, you just have a comment. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, one, say how exciting it was to see that there are so many STEAM related, um, items in the consent and how proud our community is, the district continues to value science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics with equity. From the 3D printers to technology purchase and renewals to the new CT pathways for teachers to the exciting Orange County Music and Dance, um, conservatory that they're creating for, um, our students and for, uh, South Orange County. Um, it's just wonderful that you guys really look for all these opportunities and ways to, uh, enrich the students' lives. And I just want to say I'm so appreciative. Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions regarding consent? Board member Perry?
Unmute.
Unmute. She needs to unmute.
There, finally, sorry about that. I, I was saying I'm excited about Orange County Music and Dance coming and that it can work with all levels of students. I think that's a great opportunity and I can't believe they're, they're doing it for free. Also, I wanted to comment on the, I think, item J, the COVID one. Um, just hoping that we can have a schedule.
Just hoping that we can have a schedule telling if students can be tested again. And I know there have been some requests for parents of students to be able to be tested. And I hope we just keep exploring how we can do our COVID testing. And I know Dr. Valoria said we haven't used all the money yet, but we we will.
Okay, thank you for your comments because we can't do discussion because we don't have a motion. Why don't we have a motion to approve C through N?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion with Dr. Kelly, second with board member Vickers. Any other discussion on consent at all? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Question, one quick question. Will that money on on the testing carries through offering the testing to returning secondary students?
Correct. So the the money should carry through. We budgeted for additional money. We also are waiting to determine if there's going to be any kind of federal government stimulus because there's been a lot of conversation regarding a more comprehensive testing approach potentially coming out of that. That if it does in fact happen. So more to come on that.
Thank you. Victoria, I'd like to do a roll call vote on consent, please.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, consent motion carries five. Oh, my gosh, I forgot Johanna. Oh, my gosh, Johanna. Shame on me. Okay, I'm going to be in trouble when I get home tonight. Johanna's friends with my daughter. Okay, Johanna, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I promise next action item, I've got you. I'll write myself a note. Okay, so we're moving on from consent and we are on item 14, which is our school district update. And this is a report from Dr. Valoria and staff. But first we'll go to public comment. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on a school district update for 2020-2021. We're giving a second or just thanks for everyone's patience who's watching online. We're kind of giving a second to make sure we see all the screens. I see no hands at this time. Okay, no hands. So I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Valoria.
We just, we just got a hand.
We just got a hand. Sorry, okay. Okay, so Ryan, you should be able to unmute and make your comment. Ryan, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Okay, thank you. So I was just wondering during what part, and I I'm sorry, I jumped in late moment about giving our secondary students back to school. And is there going to be a discussion about that that I can comment? Hello?
Brian, you're going in and out, but I think what you're asking about is the school reopening plan and it is number, sorry. I'm trying to find it on my chart.
Nineteen B.
Nineteen B, so it's later in the meeting. So if you want to come back for that and your wifi is just a little bit, okay.
Yeah, hopefully a little bit better.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan, your wifi is really wonky.
For that, I think there's going to be a lot of people want to comment on that and have some. Okay.
When that item comes up, just for your information, we will open the public comment. Okay. Okay, we have another public request for public comment. Okay. And Sherry Morgan, and you should be able to unmute and make your comment.
Hi, yes, thank you. I appreciate the report tonight for the school district update, and I would like to ask if the attendance numbers that will be reported in this session will include the number of students that have left the district, the number of students that are new to the district. Because those numbers do fluctuate and will affect may may make the final number a little bit more misleading because we had so many students leave, but we did also have students come into the district because of nearby schools closing. I'd also like to know if you're going to be reporting the number of kids that are online, the number of kids in the trimester, and how many kids have switched to the trimester upon announcement of reopening or stayed in the online, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, or do we have any more? Last last call for hand raising. I do not see any any additional hands. Okay, so Dr. Valoria, go ahead. We've got the shared screen going.
Yeah, so you can see it. Okay.
Uh huh.
All right, let's make sure I can navigate.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it's been, typically we do these in September, but obviously there's been a lot going on over the last several months as we prepare for bring our students back at the elementary level. And as we look towards November 23rd for our secondary reopening. I just want to give you a brief kind of general overview of where we are at on quite a few different items. And it'll be a team effort. We'll have several different staff popping in and taking over and doing their slides. So again, you know, I just really appreciate all the staff and as mentioned, both CSEA and LaBuca and our administration. I think that the name of the game here is being flexible and adaptable to all the different changes. Every week, again, we get new guidance, additional guidance around from the CDC just came out yesterday as well. So it's just, it's ever evolving. I think we all realize that. So we're doing our best to continue to evolve and and adapt as we move forward. Our ongoing commitments for this year continue to be every student, every day, continuous improvement in relationships. If you see in the bottom left-hand corner, I think we're all looking forward to getting back to the ability to go and play ping pong with our students at lunch. It, these are the the opportunities that obviously COVID has taken away from us. And it is a challenge for us. And I look forward again to the day that we get back some normalcy. But until then, I do appreciate all the effort staff is making to connect with students, whether it be virtually or in person at the elementary level. Our current enrollment, as you can see, at top of the world, we have about 412 students, 318 at El Moro. Thurston Middle School is 578. The high school is at 997. The virtual academy students are at 219. We continue to have some movement in and out of virtual academy. We had some folks move into virtual academy last week due to their mask requirement. And then we had students wanting to move into in person due to the mask requirements. So we had some folks that felt safer with the masks being required at K2 and waited other folks make a determination that they wanted to go into VA because they didn't want their students to have to wear masks. Virtual Academy Secondary is 140. We have the hybrid where they have one, at least one online course. The secondary is 193. So our total current enrollment is 2664. And again, it's as of 10, 15, 20. We continue to see a significant amount of mobility in and out of the school district. As we talked about our reopening plan, just I think it's important to recognize that it has been an ever-evolving you know, plan, and we'll be bringing and discussing that again tonight about some edits we'd like to make to the plan for board approval. We're always been trying to, and I think as Ms. Hopper mentioned, you know, making sure that we're providing the highest quality instruction we can regardless of the model. And I can appreciate all the support of the teachers in, you know, navigating that and redesigning their curriculum. And the support that our instructional aides provide and other CSEA employees to help support the the most important piece of what we do, which is student learning. We continue to provide social emotional supports. You'll hear a little bit more about that tonight as well from Dr. Keller and from Ms. White. Again, going back to just the basics, we did, we did have two committees. One was Instructional Services. And obviously, that's the bulk of the work that we do. So that was, there was a subcommittee established. Technology Subcommittee, a lot of the work required a significant amount of technology, both in terms of purchasing and procuring additional equipment. While the same time presenting, creating and presenting additional staff development and professional development opportunities. We have had a social emotional support committee and then a special education subcommittee, both been very busy. Ms. White has been working overtime. She always does, but continues to do so in terms of developing programs and trying to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students. Especially our special education students that might be struggling. And again, there'll be a recommendation tonight presented to the board regarding supporting our special education students that are struggling at the secondary. We had logistics, resources and operations. Again, they might not have had a subcommittee, but their work was was no less important. You know, again, all the supplies, all the work that we did to get to where we are today, to be able to safely reopen what both the Dr. Kelly and member Perry discussed regarding just the the safety protocol. You'll, if you walk in onto campus, you'll see a significant amount of dots at six feet. Tables with six feet of distance, easy ups to provide additional shade. You'll see hand sanitizer stations throughout. Again, just a lot of different things that we needed to do in order to make our campus safe and secure. And though ugly as can be, a lot of storage bins, you know, there was a discussion today during the tour. But because we needed to pull a lot of the furniture out of the rooms so that we can make it easily accessible for for six feet. And when you have half the amount of students in your class at any given time, you don't need half of those desks and they just get in the way. So we we have several storage bins packed to the gills. And and they are rented and they are not the prettiest things, but I think we came up with some cool ideas and maybe to to not paint them. So Jeff, don't panic, but maybe to come up with a little. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Jeff and let him just do a real brief update on operations team and several other of the operations folks will also comment. So Jeff, take it away.
All right, thank you. Dr. Valoria knows me well because immediately I started thinking about painting our storage bins once he said they were ugly. So operations wise, there have been a lot of changes. And as I mentioned with the comments that Sarah and Margaret had brought up. Staff flexibility has been key, but really what's been happening behind the scenes is there have been a lot of procurements. And we're used to that as a school district. We've purchased a lot of different supplies and services, but it's been very new with the advent of COVID-19 and the pandemic and what supplies and services we need to purchase. So we've been working very closely with our Orange County Department of Ed, the legal team. Making sure that we're going through our formal and informal bid process for competitive pricing. And then, of course, reviewing everything that we've purchased for quality assurance. And it's been a lot of work and it's it's been working well and appreciate all the work that IT and facilities have been doing, our accounts payable, making sure we get our vendors set up on time and pay them timely as well. Dr. Valoria mentioned the protocols for the path of travel, the onboarding and offboarding of students and staff has been critical. There's been a lot of really good training done by Ryan Zeta with his facility staff as they adapted their services for the COVID-19 disinfecting and cleaning protocols. One thing that no one's really seen, but is a lot of work, is the allocation, tracking and reporting of the stimulus funds that we received. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the fiscal update. We've reported two cycles of it now. And Tui Buie and Raymond Lee and our fiscal office have just done an amazing job for us on that, which is critical. Because those funds need to be spent in a timely manner on different spending dates. And then Ryan Zeta will talk a lot more about the rearrangement of classrooms and actually give some visuals on that later. So for the next slide, I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Keller, who's been an amazing part of our operations team and also with his nurses in helping us adapt because their their expertise has been critical, both on social, emotional and health and safety. So Dr. K, want to take it over from you?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. Valoria, excuse me, for continuing to emphasize the importance of educating the whole child. It's been critically important for us in our assessment and screening efforts for COVID-19. We've done more than eight rounds of testing for students and staff. We've tested over 300, 300 students for COVID-19 and over 300 approximately 330 staff members for COVID-19. And in that work, our nursing team, Pam Madge and Kelly Schultz has been, have been critical to lead us, lead all of our efforts in in identification and contact tracing. And so our work really is to is to provide a safe and healthy environment and to reduce the impact and spread of COVID-19. And the efforts that the board has made and the district has made around this this testing process have been critical. So and we have also added a district COVID-19 reporting page, which the link will be available when we publish publish this presentation. And that document provides not only important information about our response protocols for COVID-19, but also updated real-time information on active cases within the district and and total cases within the district. So hopefully that's important information for for families and for parents to make informed decisions about about safety around the around the community. So thank you.
Dr. Keller, a quick question there. Is the tracking that's going to be on the website, which is a wonderful idea. Is that going to be only if students tested through the school or is that any positive case that you hear about that relates to one of our employees or students?
Great question. Yeah, so we we will publish known cases that are that are provided back to the district. And so our our school nurses are the individuals who collect that information on a confidential basis. And we will publish that the known statistics.
But how would the DARS get the information? Is that from Orange County?
From from Orange County Healthcare Agency or.
Right, okay. Directly. Parent call.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as we talk about fiscal update, we're going to have the first interim budget adjustment, November 19th board report. So specifically to COVID is where we wanted to focus these slides. So just as a general reminder, we received roughly $1.4 million allocated from the COVID stimulus, the CARES Act funding. And then to date, we have spent or allocated almost two and a half million dollars of general fund one-time money to support the reopening and COVID response within our district. Just as a reminder, there was 5.7 million of potential one-time money in the adopted budget. And that's where that two and a half million dollars is coming from. This is one-time dollars that we're using for one-time expenditures and we're still in a good position. So as we go to the next slide. We have, and you'll see this at first interim, the revenue assumptions, we did get a revised COVID-based scenario from our property tax consultant. The growth has slowed in terms of year-over-year growth in property tax, but still remains roughly 4% in each of the three years. The expenditures will continue to come from one-time general fund dollars. We do not project any additional stimulus dollars. However, if they do come to fruition, and they might, that will be reflected at second interim. And reserves remain intact. There's no need at this point to tap into the reserves because we still have the potential one-time dollars of about $4 million available. And so our total reserves, when you look at Fund 17, Fund 40, routine restricted maintenance and the reserve for economic uncertainties add up to a little over $32 million, which is just about where we were last year.
Jeff, can I just, I just want to reiterate something before you go to, there's been some parent emails about the 1.4 million. So I want to be clear that all the CARES Act money has been committed and that we out of our general funds spent two and a half million towards COVID. So the money is being utilized exactly as was expected with the CARES Act and to buy Plexiglas and PPE and all that costs quite a bit of money. So to think that we're sitting on it is incorrect. So I want to make people know. And we are using general funds towards school reopening, planning, things like that. So I just wanted to reiterate because that was an issue I've seen brought up in some parent emails.
That is a great point. Thank you, President Wolf. Those dollars tied especially to the federal portion of the COVID stimulus money. If they are not spent, they must be returned by the deadlines given. And the first deadline is December 30th of this year. So that's why we wanted to spend those quickly.
Thank you.
I think in addition to that, Peggy, it was important to note that it took a lot more money to prepare our sites for the students. it took a lot more money to prepare our sites for the students to return. But not just the sites, it was additional, the portables at the two elementary schools to allow more classroom space for the smaller cohorts. And for the additional staff, for the teaching staff that needed to be hired to to teach the smaller groups. Thank you.
And Mr. Dixon, of the $4 million that we have set aside without going near reserves or anything else towards COVID, in addition to the three and a half billion dollars, four million dollars were very spent. If there is no more federal funding, would we be able to utilize that money for? Do you foresee any other issues or would we be able to utilize that money for testing and other things? Contract, say if we needed more nurses or whatever that might be. Would that be what that $4 million reserve is for?
Yeah, short, short answer is yes, that is one time dollars in the current general fund balance. And one of the first categories that that money can be used for is for board goals.
Okay, perfect for school. Okay. Thank you. That was helpful.
All right, that's a great segue into the facility modifications we made. We've had to make many facility related changes as you've heard about. We've added the new portables at both elementary school sites. We've added new technologies. A lot has been done to modify the interior instructional spaces. So in addition to upgrading our HVAC filters district wide, we have gone ahead and we have installed HEPA air purifiers into our interior classroom spaces. For the larger spaces like the multipurpose rooms or administration offices, we've installed UV light filters in the HVAC system that provides the same type of air purification. We've also talked a lot about our daily disinfecting services. That's what you see in the picture in this slide at Top of the World Elementary School. The crew comes through during the evening hours and they use UV light sanitation to disinfect our interior spaces of our campuses. The the benefit of this type of disinfecting is that when the room is disinfected and the crew leaves the space, the space can be immediately accessed and utilized safely since no chemicals are used. Okay, so looking at the classroom arrangements that we referred to earlier in this presentation. We worked closely with our furniture vendor to review and recommend furniture arrangements that provide safe social distancing within the the classroom and in spaces within the schools. This slide right here shows a classroom at El Moro and it adjusts the furniture to go from a large capacity to a much smaller capacity that's social distance. Taking a look at Top of the World, you have a different configured classroom. And you can see the large capacity going to a smaller capacity again here. Here we have Thurston Middle School. This would be a science room where we have this unique shape. This this classroom typically would have an occupancy of over 30. And we've had to reduce it here to approximately 19 or fewer. At Laguna Beach High School, here here's a typical classroom configuration that also takes goes from a larger capacity down to a social distance, smaller capacity. All right. So taking a look at the specific interior arrangements that we'd like to show you some examples of at the site. This is the district office and we don't have classrooms at our district office, but here we have we have a thermal temperature scanning station. And then also we have some of the Plexiglas that's installed that you can you can see here. At Laguna Beach High School, here are some classroom arrangements where you can see that large capacity has been reduced to a safe social distance capacity. Same here for Thurston Middle School, another example of the rearranged classrooms at that school site. All right, taking a look at El Moro, you can see the classrooms here with the rearrangements and all the facility modifications made to these interior spaces. And it's nice to see students sitting in their at their desk at a their new normal school day. And the same goes for Top of the World. Here's some pictures of their interior rearranged interior classrooms. Okay, so in the addition to all the unplanned facilities work that has been done. Here is some facilities work that we actually had the opportunity to plan. This is our our phase one of our Thurston field and classroom modernization. So this is the classroom modernization project. I'm pleased to report that we are on schedule and I look forward to touring everyone next summer when it's completed. I think that's what I've got for you today.
Ryan, can I ask a quick question? How how is it different on adjustments of the classrooms between elementary and secondary? In the sense that with elementary, students are with their teacher online or they're in the classroom where it's secondary, they'll be with their teacher online and in the classroom at the same time. So did that affect how those layouts happen? Because I was trying to see where the teachers' desks were and stuff in the layouts. But is that is that worked in on how that spacing works that the fact that they're going to have to use their technology as well to connect with the students?
I think the answer is yes. I think the answer is yes. We we have our, you know, our arrangements with the furniture vendor, which is a great guide. And then working closely with our principals and even involving teachers to an extent. We're able to provide each classroom space with the most, you know, effective arrangement. So I think they have considered all those factors with the setup.
I was trying to look at the the lab like at Thurston and try to figure out where is the teacher and then where would the technology be? It was easier to look around at the kids and I realized I wasn't looking for the technology. That's what made me think of it. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then a little human resources update. Hopefully the sound works. Give it a shot here. If it doesn't, let me know. Of course, hold on.
I I can do a little intro. Oh.
You want to do intro?
That's okay. You've got it going. So I'll wait till after. So as you can see, we've hired several new staff members this school year as we have expanded our programs and backfilled positions for staff who are teaching in these roles. So we've added four new positions, the elementary level, five new positions at the secondary level. And we hope you enjoyed some putting some names with faces rather than just us reading a list to you. So.
Lisa, it's wonderful to see the great job you've done on creating diversity in the new employees coming on to the district.
Thank you. So switching hats. This obviously has been an opening like no other we have experienced. This is not your typical back to school report. But we've been, you know, flexible and adapting to change and focused on continuous improvement. So we folk, we hosted our first ever completely virtual professional development conference this summer with over 60 sessions. Most of which were focused on teacher tools for effective distance learning instruction. We also identified specific distance learning curriculum for our virtual programs and teacher training was also conducted for these programs. And then, of course, we've been focused on refining and improving how we're delivering that content to students. So just we know that distance learning has greatly improved over the emergency distance learning that we provided in the spring. So now we're focusing on new technology and instructional practices that create opportunities for effective learning. Whether students are learning in person or in a virtual setting. So next I'll turn it over to Dr. Keller, who will provide a social emotional update.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. So our priorities in the district continue to be around social emotional learning as an essential condition for student success. And on the front lines of that work are our teachers and staff members who provide direct services to students. And we really emphasized working with our teachers and staff to be able to identify risk and warning signs for students and be able to connect them to school based mental health supports efficiently this summer and into this year. Our team of seven school counselors, our two student support specialists, five school psychologists and absolute caring staff are here for student social emotional wellness and social emotional wellbeing. We continue to focus our efforts on prevention work, delivering curriculum at the elementary level and providing some supplementary curriculum at the middle school and high school level. And we will be following through with our our unique commitments that is still stands to be unique around universal screening for students for social emotional wellness. And that is our way to try to identify students who may not overtly request assistance or who may not be referred by a teacher or parent. It's another channel for us to provide much needed supports. So just want to say so appreciative again to be working in such a great district that values this work as as an essential function of the school district.
Our priorities in special education include full implementation of services defined in our individual educational plans. We've had to make various adjustments as we've navigated the various phases, including plans for students who are are required to self quarantine. Another priority is completion of our assessments as shared with you previously. And and as approved by you, we were able to open an assessment center over the summer. At which time we completed 93 assessments that has really put us in a in a good position. We continue to navigate those past due assessments and are working to stay current on tri annuals as well as initial requests for assessments at this time. Another priority for us is to continue to hold timely meetings. And that means responding and initiating meetings when our students are struggling. It also means holding those IEPs and those tri annual reviews when when they're due. We are working towards creating placement or work experience opportunities virtually. And that'll continue to be a priority for us for our students. Our parent teacher consultations are important, including some home visits that we've conducted. And the last but not least, we continue our parent mentor work. And our parent mentors are in the process of putting together some parent training that will be rolling out virtually in the next few months.
Irene, I have a quick question. How are teachers covered? Or maybe they're not doing it during class time, but when they do their tri annual, when they do their IEP meetings. Right? Because some of them can need so much teacher input, right? So how's that covered for them when they have class or?
In term, Carol, just to clarify your question in terms of holding those meetings?
Holding those meetings, yeah, in the virtual, I had a thought about that, like in the virtual, how does that work for them when they have class? And like who covers for them when they have to step up for a meeting or?
Well, we're using the preschool times. So early in the morning before school starts, we are also using our resident subs to assist with covering general education teachers in those meetings. And depending upon the teacher's schedule, I mean, we're working collaboratively to figure out those times, but we're making it happen. And I have to be honest with you that there are some things that we've really learned in this virtual during this time that is is actually more efficient. So some of our IEP meetings are are working really well to hold them virtually.
That's wonderful. That's great news. Okay, thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So Mike couldn't be here tonight to give a brief update on technology services, but so I'll I'll handle it. You can see from the large amount of Zoom meetings, obviously, we've had 15,000 Zoom meetings in the fall so far. Canvas, which we just rolled out this year, has been really a huge success for us and much appreciation goes to one, the board for adopting, allowing us to adopt this platform. And two, to all of our teachers, including our teachers on special assignment and our our coaches and all of those that put in time and energy to develop really robust professional development for staff on this topic. But you can see just a significant, you know, uptick in the use of an online platform. And again, much needed in an online environment. But it has been one that has allowed us, I believe, to put our teachers in a good position to be successful with our students. And we also are doing Google Classroom at the elementary level. And you can see a significant increase at that level as well from your from last year. So again, I appreciate Mike and the team, as well as again, all the teachers who are involved in making this happen. It it takes a lot of hands to make this work. And we, you know, it's not without running into challenges here and there, but overall, we've been able to navigate them and we'll continue to move forward.
I'm bummed Mike can't be here tonight because I know that he is always so excited about increasing that number year after year. I know this isn't the way he wanted to increase it, but wow, that's a huge jump. So and kudos to everyone working so diligently in the baking, the technology work so we can have virtual education. Thank you.
Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Yeah, although most of the statewide data accountability that we typically collect were suspended last year due to the pandemic. There are some valuable metrics that we were still able to collect. On this slide here, we have some outcomes related to last year's graduating class. And we continue to have an increasing and high percentage of students pass the AP exam. That's at 56% there of last year's graduating class. I would continue to high passing rate and a percentage of students that are taking it. And this is really important metric that we continue to look at because this is such a key indicator that correlates to post secondary or college success. And then we also similarly continue to maintain high percentages of students that qualify for the state seal by literacy. So they're proficient in more than one language. And then our UCUS A3G course completion rate continues to be very high and then continue to be in that 70% range. So that is was really good to see considering some of the challenges that happened last spring. And then if you go to the next slide. We have our attendance rate or what the state is kind of reframing this year with distance learning as engagement rate for in 2020. distance learning as the engagement rate for in 2021. As compared to last year, it is really good to see that we have a similar percentage of students that are checking in daily to their classes for either a full or partial day. Obviously, it looks a little bit different with distance learning than it does being in person. And really, for this piece here, I always want to give a really big thank you to our teachers, instructional assistants, and counselors, who are really at the front lines of engaging the students and checking in with them and following up when they don't show up, or they're on for 10 minutes and they're off. Last, less than a year ago, teachers were primarily engaging students in one learning environment, their classroom. With distance learning, we're not only shifting the practices now, they're also really trying to manage or facilitate, you know, 20, 25, 30 different learning environments from home. And so really, just a big, big thank you to the teachers for really working so hard to do that and continue to improve and get better at it. So I want to take a chance to share that. So thank you.
And again, I just appreciate the support of the board and all of our staff as we navigate this uncharted time. You know, this is one where it's taken all hands on deck. And as you saw from the HR video, adding more hands on deck to make it work. And that was something I pointed out to both Dr. Kelly and Member Perry today, when you just saw the kids moving around is for every little, every little group of ducklings, using Dr. Kelly's words, you know, there is an adult with them, and it's taken a lot of moving parts to make this work. And we're just, again, grateful the board supporting us and making those additions, supporting us in procuring the necessary testing and the relocatables and all of those things that we can do to ensure that our opening has been safe and supportive. And if in a virtual world, we have the resources, we need to make it as successful as we can be. So again, thank you to the board, and just any questions or comments.
The attendance and engagement highlights, that was wonderful to see the increase from last year to this year in the, as Chad pointed out, the duality of how the teachers are working with all the different kids. Great job. And a great job on all of this.
Yeah, a really nice report. Do our student board reps have any comments they'd like to share after this report?
I think that all sounded really great. I love how, you know, careful and safe everything is in terms of making sure it's sanitized. And I mean, I know just for secondary schools, there's a lot more kids, so it's a big risk. So I just, I really appreciate it, and I think it all sounds really great.
Thanks, Johanna. So, and did you have anything you wanted to share?
Yes, I'll go up to Hannah's point there. I think that for those parents in attendance, I think if you'd like to encourage your students, your children, do you look at the, our student board rep Instagram? I posted some brief clips of that presentation so they can see how school might look with the distancing and the safety protocols in place to make them feel more ease going back. And thank you so much for that presentation, district members. And I think that we're all looking forward to going back in. I think that obviously there's a lot in place for us to help facilitate that move back.
Thank you. Vickers, go ahead.
Thank you for the report. Lots of information and giving us the picture so that we can see what's happening in the layouts of the classrooms to see how it's changed. Obviously, you needed the storage containers because that's a lot of furniture to get out of there. This will be posted on the website, this report?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I'm really, I'm really glad that we're able to continue so intensely our social emotional supports and all the work in that area, in addition to the special education, which is a real challenge to meet those needs for our students that have intense needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Vickers. Anyone else have any comments or anything?
Thank you to your team, Dr. Valoria, for an excellent presentation, and thank all of the cabinet for presenting. I do think it's interesting about the logistics of the school and the arrangement and the floor plans. There's so many pieces to this puzzle to get our kids back. So I want to make sure people understand that there's so many working pieces. So I'm grateful for all of you in the cabinet for your work. And I do love seeing the video of the new employees. I love to see their faces, and they're very young faces. Very exciting.
Hey, I just want to add one thing. I really, because I noted, I noted it when they were saying it, but I really appreciate the student perspective that we had from both of our student reps and how perceptive they are of what's involved. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on unless you have anything else, Dr. Valoria. Okay. So I'm on to item number 16A. Sorry, need to read in glasses. 16A is the ratification of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with, you've heard this before, AB 1200, Chapter 1213/1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title V, Section 15449, and the 2020-2021 negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association, known as CSEA, and its Laguna Beach Chapter Number 131. If you would like to comment publicly, the attendees, you would need to raise your hand right now, will be our public comment on item 16A. I don't see any hands raised. Okay. And then, Dr. Winston, did you have anything you wanted to share on this item?
Sure. I just wanted to note that staff recommends the board approve this agreement with CSEA. We work very collaboratively with both of our associations. We use interest-based bargaining, which is, you know, not an easy process, but very fulfilling and really gets to the core of issues. And it's particularly difficult to use when you're talking about compensation, but we were able to do that and arrive at an agreement. So we're recommending approval of this agreement.
Okay. Any board questions at this time? I don't see any. May I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. Victoria, you got that? That was a whole hodgepodge. That was almost everybody.
I got it.
You picked the names. Okay. Any other further discussion on the ratification of the CSEA collective bargaining agreement?
I just want to thank them for the IBB and for the collaboration, the things that it brings up when they are all working on what these joint interests are. And it really, I think it's improved our district in a way that when Lisa first talked about it, I didn't understand. And she was so passionate about it, and it really has, it's changed it. So I really appreciate all the work. It's even harder for you, and you come up with such amazing results. And so thank you for, thank you for negotiating on our behalf. So and Margaret, thank you for all of the work that you do for your bargaining unit. You're an amazing leader with them.
I just wanted to thank everyone who is involved in this. Our teachers and our staff have done an exceptional job in being flexible and being cooperative and making sure that our children's education is number one. And I can't thank you enough as far as for what you've done. And I'm sorry, it's not more.
Thank you. Board Member Vickers, I saw you.
I think that our move into using IBB really helped in having to do it the virtual way, because that is more difficult. But I think that since we'd already had some practice of working in that collaborative fashion, that it was easier. And I am appreciative that our associations were willing to extend the process. And so that we, because they, it just required that kind of flexibility to give us time over the summer to get to where we needed to be. So thank you.
Right. So just for reference for people, any attendees, these are usually, negotiations take place in June, May, June, July, and it's done before the school year starts. But due to COVID, we pushed it off. And our organizations were in agreement with that. We are really grateful for the flexibility, and they are a stakeholder in this community and work really hard at our schools. So we're appreciative. And Margaret, again, thanks for your leadership. It's always nice. And I picture you as Mother Goose with all your ducklings now. Oh, no. It's my vision of you. I kind of love it. I think that's your Halloween costume. Sorry. Okay, I'm gonna do the student board rep vote first because I'm organized. Johanna?
Yes.
Thank you. And now a roll call vote of the board members, please.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
The mute.
Yes, yes, yes. Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. So the motion carries 5O. Thank you very much. We're now on 16B on our agenda, and this is approval of proposal in accordance with AB 1200, Chapter 1213/1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title V, Section 15449, and 2020-2021 Compensation Proposal with Non-Represented Classified and Certificated Employees. This is the opportunity to speak in live public comment. Please raise your hand if you're an attendee and would like to speak. President Wolf, I don't see any hands. Okay, thank you. We, I think we give a nice lull of time, so people can ponder it. We want you to be able to ponder. We respect the thought process. Okay, so we'll close the public comment. Dr. Winston, did you have anything to add on this contract?
So this is our proposal for management and unrepresented employees. They do not negotiate, but it has been our longstanding past practice that are, that we acknowledge our management and unrepresented employees in a similar fashion as we do our associations.
Any board questions at this time? Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
No move.
I heard Dr. Kelly, and I think it was Board Member Vickers, yes? I'm like, whose voice was that? Okay. Thank you. And now we can have discussion. I do want to note that, that the increase goes across the board to our employees, and I think it's a really good standard to have. I just want to note that I think that's really important in this district, and it goes across to everyone that's working here. Any other board comments, questions?
I would note tied into that, that since we have a lot more attendees and people viewing our meetings than we've had, that this is a yearly process. We do negotiate every year, and it takes various forms with the two different associations, but it is, it is a standard process in the district. Thank you.
That's nice to supply that. Yes.
Yeah, that is.
Board Member Normandin?
Dr. Winston, who else is, who else is the unrepresented in this group? I know, I know management, but then it's management and unrepresented. I always forget, like, is that our athletic directors?
Confidential?
No, it's our confidential.
It's a confidential.
Yeah, they're technically classified staff, but they're unrepresented because they often deal with data relating to negotiation. So they're kind of viewed as neutral and not part of either bargaining in it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Kelly, go ahead.
My comments are that I think the administration of this district has done an exceptional job this year of being flexible and putting the kids first. Mr. Dixon, in particular, redid our bonds and saved the district millions of dollars. As you remember, I wanted to give cash bonuses because I'm a big, I'm a big believer in cash bonuses in May. And none of you allowed me to do it, but.
Come on over to my house. You can give me a cash bonus.
Business background. And all I can, all I can do now is say how appreciative I am of what they've all done.
Well, Dr. Kelly, I'll take a cash bonus from you personally.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I had that same sentiment before, and Jan really had to kind of explain the history of how that doesn't work well. And it was so helpful to understand. And also, you know, Jan had explained to us early on on how having the same raise up here for everyone, how that creates the culture and really supports the culture that we believe in in our equity. So I, but I'm with you from the business side, that it just, those bonuses is what we're so used to. So it's hard not to do, especially a year like this. So.
Thank you.
So grateful to the entire cabinet, everyone, and all the work. Dr. Winston, I don't think people realize that there were, it used to be two people that did your role, and now it's you doing all of this in COVID, where we have six or seven different modalities of the way we teach. And the fact that you are still with us, we're so blessed because you have, you have just dealt with, no matter what the changes were, you've just come up with a way and worked with your team and inspire them to find a way to deal with whatever the new changes are. So we really appreciate it, and I wish it could be more as well.
Yes, Board Member Vickers, I see your hand.
Following up on what Dr. Kelly said, and Jeff, make sure I have this right, that all, you mentioned all the work you've done on the bond, but it, it reduces what the taxpayer pays. Is that correct?
Yes, exactly.
Every, how much? How much, Jeff?
That's the overall financial standard of the district that we get such a high rating. Is that correct?
Yeah, we actually increased our rating from good to strong, and it's an annual reduction that the property owner is going to pay towards a GO bond every year for the duration of the bond.
How much?
It depends on the value of the property.
Yeah.
But the total amount is within almost $10 million for the community.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other comments, board members? I see none. I'm double checking your boxes, your Brady Bunch boxes. Okay, student, we might have to sing one day.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. Johanna, I'm coming to you for the student board rep vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Johanna. And then a board member roll call vote, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries 5O. And now we're on 16C. Sorry, I move papers around a lot. And 16C is approval of agreement with Living Fit Nation for student COVID testing with Laguna Beach Unified School District from September 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. This is your opportunity for a public comment on the COVID testing. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item 16C. Do not see any hands. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. And now, Dr. Winston, would you like to speak to this item?
Sure. Thank you, President Wolf. As the board is aware, we conducted optional student COVID testing just prior to the elementary students' return to in-person learning. And again, during the week that they had returned, we tested about 350 students and identified three positive cases for which we worked with OCHCA to contact trace. We are requesting approval for this agreement with this contractor, which would allow us to offer optional testing also for secondary students prior to their return. And this contract is a not-to-exceed amount, so we're only charged for the tests that were used.
And this is a voluntary program, correct?
Correct. We can't mandate student testing as a condition to attend.
Okay. And also, that means our dashboard is based on voluntary.
Right, right. It is, but as Dr. Keller explained, we also can get reports, you know, just from parents or from OCHCA of confirmed positive cases. So it's not entirely based on our testing. It's, it's based on the cases reported to us.
Okay. Okay. Any board member questions? Sorry, I started questions before I opened it to you all. Sorry.
Do, do some districts require staff to be tested?
It's been a discussion, I know, statewide and locally. I'm not aware of anyone. There have been some conversations about mandated staff testing, but I'm not aware of any districts that's implemented at this time.
Somebody's badly echoing. So muting would be.
We don't have a motion, so we're just in questions right now, right?
Right, we're in questions, yes.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, but it'll lead to discussion, so I'll wait.
Okay. Okay, why don't we have a motion to approve the testing contract?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second with Board Member Vickers. Okay, now discussion. Go ahead, Board Member Normandin.
So I am, this is so fluid, and I'm not asking that we look at every state and every school, whatever call it, right? Because you guys have full-time jobs doing what you're doing, right? But in how fluid it is, there was a report that just came out today that had we tested and done contract chasing, like a daily testing of our population. had we tested and done contract chasing, like a daily testing of our population, we would have normalcy and everybody would be back at work and doing things because you would just know you're positive or negative. And if you had to do, if everyone, I know we are not the country necessarily that mandate everything. Same way as other countries and stuff, so I'm not saying that, but we need robust testing. We need more of this. And I know we can make it mandatory for teachers. It means we have to pay for it. So there's a cost that comes to making mandatory. For students, I would hope that they would understand in order to be, for everyone to be safe, that they would want to be tested and that we would encourage them to be tested. But we need some kind of regular testing. Otherwise, it's, it's false security in everything else we do. If we don't know if someone is positive and they are asymptomatic with, we put every, we put the entire district at risk and the community, which is, the majority of our community is at the age where they are at higher risk. You know, it's only 10% of students. So, and, you know, 40, 30-some odd percent are below that at-risk number, so age. So I just, I'm so concerned about testing. I know I say it over and over. I feel like Groundhog Day. I feel so bad about the fact I say it over and over, but testing and contract chasing. And so I know we don't have a law that says we can't mandate it, but we also, as a as a way for someone to enter the school. But I, I don't think there's a judge that's going to say that we couldn't do it. So I still think that we need to push forward, mandate, and allow people to, to react by taking us to court if they wanted to.
Okay, so that, that is more your thoughts on this issue?
I know.
Right, and I appreciate you sharing your thoughts, but this is the action item, at least of a testing plan, at least.
I'm just saying, we need more of, we need more of this. It's what I was trying to talk about within where it strikes.
I see you, Jan, just a minute.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, let me go to Board Member Vickers. She, okay.
Yep.
It ties a little bit into what Carol is expressing as, as a concern. But I think it would, it's, we can appeal to parents to utilize this service for their students, particularly when the secondary students getting ready to come back so that we have that information, even if it's just a one-day data point, we at least have that to start with. Because of our 723 elementary students that came back, if I have that number, if I remember it right, then we have a little over 300 that tested. So we have a lot that didn't choose to do that. And I think taking up with what Carol's saying, if we could at least get the communication out encouraging the support for that, that we are offering it, and if we get a higher number, it would be terrific so that we have more information as we, as they return to school.
I, I agree, and I would like it to be able to be ongoing. So if something comes up, we can offer it again. So I'm hoping at some point we might be able to extend this contract or get a new contract.
Right, and I think we're going to see possibly new guidelines for schools as well with testing. So Soran, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to kind of reinforce a member of Vickers' point that I think that we've, we can spread awareness about this. And I think there's other ways to do it where, besides forcing, I think as a community, we can all understand the fact that we all are in this together. I think that if students, we're offering this, the district is offering this amazing opportunity to help everyone else be safe. And I think I implore parents in this to encourage your friends. I will work within, encourage students to seek this out if their parents are adverse to it. But I think it's very important that we take the initiative as a community to work for this as the higher testing rates equal more awareness, and that allows us to go back to school, which is what everyone wants. But without that knowledge, we're going in blind. I think that's a risk we don't want to take. So please, you know, work as a community. We can do this. We are, often this amazing opportunity. And I think that we can go in with a little more light in the dark here.
Agree.
I agree. And, and New York City is, I mean, they require anyone who wants to attend, they have to get tested at least once a month, and NYU's every two weeks and, right, stuff like that. So there's, there's, there's a move and a shift towards it, and there'll be more guidelines around it. I just.
I think if there's a shift at the state level with this California Department of Education, that's a benefit to us, right? Or if the legislature passes something that causes, we need support from higher-ups, to be quite honest, in public schools to endorse more strict systems. We just do.
I think Carol's point, well taken regarding testing in New York City. They've gone to random testing, and the nice thing is that the numbers have have proven that the kids can go back to school. And I would suggest to everyone that they sign up for the newyorktimes.com/schoolbriefing that comes out every day to, which they do a great job of letting you know what's happening about schools around the country. Again, newyorktimes.com/schoolbriefings, and I have no interest, financial interest in the New York Times.
Um, I'd like to go ahead. Is there any more discussion on this, or I'd like to vote on the item? Okay, student board rep, Johanna?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then a board call, a board roll call vote, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
She said yes, I saw.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. Oh my gosh, okay. Zoom is really hard. Okay, we are on 19A, our item. This is amended, sorry, classes. Amended employment contracts for the Deputy Superintendent of Human Resources and Public Communications and the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. And this is your opportunity for live public comment. So please raise your hand, and this is 19A. I'm sensing there are no hands being raised, just double checking. Yes, I don't see any hands. I'm going to close the public comment. And Dr. Valoria, you're on this issue, please.
Thank you. As per the original contracts that were approved by the board in 2018, that really actually took the board adopted salary schedules from previous years and just put them into the actual contract form. I am recommending to the board to provide the both Deputy Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent the same raises that the other groups received, including the unrepresented management and the NCSCA, which is a 1.75 ongoing salary increase. And again, that's just, that's also in accordance with their employee agreement. That was board-approved, that they receive the same compensation increases given to the administration unit. So happy to take any questions.
I want to note that the title for the Deputy Superintendent was incorrect on my agenda. I apologize. It's Human Resources and Instructional Services. So sorry about that. I just noticed it. Yes, it was wrong. It's wrong on the posted agenda, too. Sorry, Dr. Winston.
Oh.
He does that, too.
So I just want to ask.
Can you guys hear me? Every meeting, my headphones die.
Dr. Valoria, is there?
Board questions?
Yeah, so the, the term in, in their contract in which they have job security, because in the past there was no job security for our district employees of any kind. That, that term, as long as they receive a positive evaluation from you, automatically extends. I forgot what term's called, Jan. Evergreen, Evergreens another year?
So it still comes to the board for approval. But, but yes, so assuming a positive valuation, they are, additional years added to their contract. And so bringing that forward to you as well. Again, as, as President Wolf pointed out, we traditionally get these all done and have these board-approved usually in June and for the next year. But obviously, being that we've had a lot of challenges and also at the same time, negotiations slowed down to the fall. That's why it's coming to you at this point in time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I see none. May I have a motion, please?
The moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Board Member Norman and Board Member Vickers. Any other discussion items or questions?
I just.
Mike, oh, go ahead, Jim.
I just want to point out again that Jeff saved the taxpayers at Laguna Beach $10 million this year, and we're giving him a 1.75% increase. Lisa has done an exceptional job of reopening the schools smoothly, doing the contracts exceptionally well, working with, with everyone. And I just think it's a measly amount of money to give exceptional employees who I hope we can continue to keep.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any other board members want any comments, questions?
Just our gratitude to both of you and ditto what Dr. Kelly said.
It's awful being a former president of a business school.
I share the same gratitude for both of you, Dr. Winston and Mr. Dixon, and your hard work and always being clear and directed in your work for what's best for students in our schools. I'm grateful for that. I'm going to go ahead and start the vote. I just want to double-check. Anybody wants a comment? I'm looking at all of you. Okay. I'm going to start with the student board rep vote. Johanna?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the roll call vote with the board, please.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Reluctantly, yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And we're now on 19B on our agenda, and this is the reopening plan for secondary schools. Just a couple of reminders for people that are watching. The board did make a motion in July to reopen secondary schools at the trimester break, which the trimester ends November 20th. And a reminder that the board was very clear that they wanted to be part of the decision-making for reopening schools, even though Dr. Valoria has an emergency decree. It was presented very clearly that we wanted to be engaged in this process. So I want to make sure that's understood by the attendees and any other public. This is an opportunity for public comment on this item, so please raise your hand if you would like to comment. And this is for the reopening plan for secondary schools. 19B, and I think Ryan Gere, if his Wi-Fi is better, I don't know if he wanted to speak. I see him on here, but I, he hasn't raised his hand. Okay. We'll just give a stall to see if anybody raises their hand. Thank you to all the participants, the attendees on the line. We appreciate it. Yes, he has raised his hand. So Ryan, I have, you just need to unmute. Ryan, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so a really difficult time right now, as everybody understands. What's interesting is that the entire school district of parents is not here tonight to talk about how they feel because they feel, and I know how a lot of people feel right now. It's just really, I think my, my typical answer that I get is, I don't know, which is a response to, how are you doing it? And so we need help from the school district to get our kids back to where they can learn because they're not learning right now. And I know I wasn't too sure what that preemptive salvo was about being part of the discussion. I appreciate that. But, you know, we're at a different point than we were in July. We have some time now with the kids in school, and we understand what's happening, what's not happening, and a lot's not happening. So we've had a lot of time to make some changes, and I haven't heard anything from anybody. You know, what have been nice for somebody to call me, email me, and say, we're working really hard on this. This is what, me personally, not some generalized male, but somebody calling me, one of the board members, and, and really trying to connect. And that's what we're lacking right now, is that connection, and that's where the kids learn. And I'd really like to hear how we're, we're going to make it back there and get those kids learning because we've got a lifelong devastation happening here. I don't, I don't know how we'll recover if we don't figure something out. So I'd like to hear about that.
Thank you.
That's.
Okay, I think you finished. Thank you, Ryan. Any other hands raised for this item? Yes. I will call on Stacy. I'm going to, okay, so Stacy, you can unmute and start your comment.
Stacy Smilowitz here, and I am surprised there are not more people here because many of us have been to meetings before. I submitted a letter to a very important meeting. We had 85 families sign that letter. And it got no recognition. It was bundled with all the other emails of people saying that, I never read the playbook, and now my kid doesn't get to have recess or a fun lunch or see his friends. And so I don't want to go back to school. And I realized that meeting had many, many, many letters sent in. But I know many people are extremely upset. I talk to them every day. And I'm, I, everyone's burning out. So we just hope, we really hope that our kids are going back to school. They need this. Both of my kids have written in. It's hard. I said, they're fine. They're not thriving. They're fine. And I also know that the school officer told me that they're making three to four home visits a day for kids that are not even showing up. So I just hope somebody is caring about all these kids that are not doing okay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other hands raised for the public comment during this item?
Yes. Next, we have Michelle Foley. You can unmute and make your comment. Yes, hi. I've been listening to all of your meetings for as long as I can remember, and I just feel as though the communication during this whole, whole COVID time period from the administration, which is Dr. Valoria in particular, down to the itty-bitty teachers and anyone else, has been terrible. Parents are just left in the dark. We're left guessing as to why we're, why are we left at home? Why our kids are struggling? Why we're not in school when we know other districts are in school, when we know we could be in school, when we know we have the money? We have the willpower. We have the parents who are willing to work hard and extra. And we're just left wondering and scratching our heads. Is it the teachers that just don't want to work hard and get back into the classroom? Is it the school board that just wants to just unanimously play God with our kids' education? Because our kids are suffering. You know, they're not getting an education. Sitting at home, lacking motivation, being afraid to ask a question because asking a question over Zoom is really difficult. Your whole, the whole class, here's what you have to say, and you feel stupid asking that question versus when you're in person, you can go up quietly and ask the teacher, maybe from a distance, but the whole class doesn't have to hear you. And Peggy, I heard you say, your headphones die every meeting you ever have on Zoom. Well, guess what? That happens to these kids. That happens to your teachers. So every single day, Wi-Fi's are cutting out. There's technical difficulties. Headphones die. All sorts of things are happening, and this is not an education. And shame on all of you educators, quote educators, who think that this is what our district is about. I've been listening to this meeting practically getting sick to my stomach, you guys all applauding each other, saying how wonderful we all are.
Michelle, please watch that you are civil in your statements. I know you're upset.
Peggy, have I sworn? Am I swearing?
No, but you're starting to yell.
Please don't interrupt. I'm not yelling. I'm a loudspeaker, if you know me, and I think you do. I'm a loudspeaker, but I'm not yelling. I haven't sworn, and I'm not being nasty. I'm, I'm a very emotional, fired-up mother who speaks for many parents who are thinking that our kids are not being, they're the last to be thought of. You guys are thinking about the portables and raises for the teachers. There isn't a, I don't know one parent that's working that's had a raise. But I'm glad the teachers are getting raises and all the staff members. That's wonderful. That's wonderful. That cut me off. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, we do. Next is Terry. Terry, you are allowed to unmute.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to reiterate to the school board. As you all know, I've been very passionate about our district and our education for our teachers and for our students. This Zoom teaching has been quite a learning process for everyone involved. And I applaud the teachers. I believe they're doing their best, and they're trying very hard to give the kids the best education that they possibly can. But I also do believe that we're failing our students. We need to get our kids back in school. We need to get them live education five days a week. The playbook as designed is not adequate for our students, for our district, which is a very small. Other districts are able to figure this out. And I want Laguna Beach to figure this out. I know it can be done. Other districts are setting the example that it can be done. We are a small district. We need to make this happen for our students. They are suffering in many, many ways. Their grades may not show it, but I have grave concerns. I brought them up about the trimester in the past, specifically about the depth of the material that's being taught in 10 weeks, the lapse of material being taught between a Spanish class that ended in June, which won't happen again until March. There are grave issues with this trimester schedule, not to mention the fact that there are several kids that based on the playbook will be done with school by 11:00 a.m. in the morning, and they only get to attend two days a week. Now, I sure hope Jason and the staff has come up with a better plan that we'll see tonight. It would have been nice to have this plan ahead of time so that we all could have had time to evaluate it and really comment on the proposed changes. I'm very hopeful that you're doing what is needed for our students in our district. I know you all are trying, and I applaud your efforts. But what has happened and what was proposed is not enough. And I urge you to make it better for the kids when they do return. And I know we can return safely. I know businesses have been open. My businesses have been open. We see 100-plus customers a day, and we are all healthy and safe. Protocols are in place. We follow them. It can be done. Teaching is essential. Education is essential. And I also want to know, how many people have written in to you about this topic tonight? I'd like you to discuss that with all the audience that isn't brave enough to speak up. And I just want to say thank you for listening. And I really hope that you will improve the playbook and get our kids back as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any other hands raised for public comment?
Good job.
You were so loud.
Victoria, do you know where we're at with time?
Yeah, we've had four speakers. Two of them were two minutes, and two of them were three minutes. So we have time.
Okay, thank you. Next is Colton Weeks. Colton, you can unmute.
Hi, you guys. I'm going to keep this short and sweet just because I felt, I mean, students other than representative people should be speaking, even though I think he's been doing an excellent job. So hello, my name is Colton Weeks. I'm the pep commissioner at Laguna Beach High School. I'm currently a senior. All I'd like to say is that students are suffering. The will to learn has been completely lost. And I'm a total procrastinator, but it's next level. When a teacher asks a question to the class, kids will literally turn their cameras off and remain silent. And that's just not the participation that we should be looking for, especially with the pretty good class sizes I feel that we've had this year. Hands-on learning has been completely eradicated. Students who have not attended a single Zoom are still getting perfect marks on their attendance. It's too easy to simply turn off one's camera and just leave. As an ASP representative as well, I'm familiar with the students not wanting to participate in school events, et cetera. But never have I seen an entire school lose complete interest in everything we are doing. All-school spirit has been, I mean, completely thrown out the window. Students used to talk about how great LBH was and how it was a perfect example of what public schools could and should be and what they can be capable of. I mean, we have exceptional standards of learning, or at least we used to. Now, I mean, all people talk about is leaving. And I think that's horrible. We should never have students talking about leaving our school to go to a public or a private school. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, hand raised? Okay. Next is Kristy Costa. You can unmute.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to be a counter voice. I think everybody is doing a fabulous job, and I'm so incredibly grateful. I equate it to, if a regular school year is like putting a thousand-piece puzzle together, this school year is like putting a million-piece puzzle together. And I don't know how you've been doing it. And there isn't a pay raise that it's enough, to be perfectly honest, when you talk about all of the things that you've had to review, all of the different protocols from all of the different agencies. It's the pieces of the puzzle are just, it's unbelievable. And my son is doing very well with the online learning. And I get that his personality leans more towards that. But I keep asking him about other kids. And everyone in his class seems to be very engaged. I hear him in his room laughing and talking as they're discussing issues in class. He's right now in economics and talking about stock prices every day and watching them. And we're having engaging conversations at home from what he's learning at school. So I hate that there are kids that are suffering. And I'm very glad that our school district is also offering the resources to them, that the social-emotional learning is such a big aspect of what our district does and that the resources are there for those students. So just a huge thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Kristy. Another, any other hands raised? Yes. Next is Debbie. Debbie, you can unmute and make your comment.
Yes, thank you very much. I don't have a student in the school district currently, although I have had two sons that graduated from the school district. And I have been tuning in because I have many friends that do have students that are currently in. And I think that one thing, the comment that I'd like to make is that we are one of the most generously funded school districts, being a special district in the state, one of a very elite status. And so accountability should be, I think, at a very high standard. Looking at the way the school district has approached this pandemic, and I think that, yes, many, many of you have stepped up and tried to accommodate. But I'm really puzzled because there was significant time to plan. And it seems like all of a sudden, we're still in the quote-unquote planning stage. Hearing the testimonies from the students and seeing that there are lots of questions that are still out there, then I think, and I really request, because as a taxpayer, we do have a voice, even though we don't have a student in the district. I am seeking a plea for leadership and for making the tough decisions and for looking at results. Yes, there's dedication, but at the end of the day, we need results. The parents of our community need results. Those students need results. And I just implore all of you to look very, very specifically at the results for our students, not anything else but for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, more hands kept? Yes. Next, we have Sheri Morgan. You can unmute.
Hi, thank you. I would like to contribute to this conversation and say that I really do applaud the efforts of the staff and the hard work that they're doing. It's unfortunate that there's so much extra work to accommodate all these different learning models as a result of reinventing the wheel. I do agree a lot with what Debbie said. I thought that was very well spoken. I'm very concerned with the presentation of the opening plan tonight, primarily due to the lack of transparency on the content of the secondary schools opening for in-person learning. There is still no documents attached. There wasn't documents attached as of 5:00. And from what I understand, the board gets the information almost at the same time. So how would anybody have a chance to review and have the opportunity to express concerns if we haven't even seen the plan? Going back to June, there was a board comment about the use of the word transparency. And the statement was made that they felt that it was actually an overused term in the district, and the district was very open. Well, I think that's part of the concern. Most definitions of the word transparency, when you apply them to a social setting, includes openness, but it also includes communication and accountability. It seems apparent that the understanding of this word transparent means one thing to this board and administration and another to the community that funds it. The community is asking you to be accountable to the promise you made to bring a trimester model that you presented as the only choice to get back to in-person learning as soon as possible once we were allowed to reopen. A staggered start was presented and approved after much discussion amongst you. And it was agreed that the staggered start would happen over weeks, not months. November 23rd is not as soon as possible. Most families realize that they, by choosing the only in-person option, they were sacrificing the best education possible and returned for at least an in-person education. I'm disappointed that our district presented and the board approved a program that compromised the quality of education and has the potential to compromise our students' social and emotional health by not returning to in-person learning as soon as possible. The year-round online option falls short as well. Currently, you all are falling short on the promises you made to this community. Presenting this evening for November 23rd, opening continues to under-deliver to our kids' education. To not share the information in advance of the meeting continues the same pattern of a narrow lane of communication from the district. For the board, and to in the community to be learning of this plan tonight, it's a continual pattern of lacking transparency and communication, and therefore it lacks accountability. Lastly, I would really like to thank the board members that have abused their power and violated board bylaws by showing the community that as a passionate adult, a passionate parent, that you will retaliate against them. And despite some of the comments from the board saying that there is no such thing as retaliation, a couple of you in the last week have proven that that's not a true statement, that retaliation is live, it's real, and it is something that parents and students are fearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another hand? Yes, we have.
This will be, this will be our last speaker before you need to vote.
Okay. Thank you, Victoria. Chad Anderton, you can unmute. Chad, you need to unmute before you make your comment. We still can't hear you. I'm not sure if your Wi-Fi connection's good. It doesn't look like he's muted, but I can't hear anything. Yeah. Apologies, Chad. We cannot hear you. Do you want to take him off and then pull in another person? And we'll do that, and then we'll do the vote on extending public comment. Perfect. I'll go to the next person. Okay. It's Liz. Liz, you can unmute your mic. Liz, make sure to unmute, please. I've asked her to unmute.
Can we unmute her?
I, all I can do is ask her to unmute. So that's the button I'm pushing, but she's not unmuting. Do we want to go to the next person in the list? Let's go to the next person, and then they can raise their hand. Sorry. Sorry, people, if we're not able to hear you. The next person is just labeled as guest. Okay. Guest, you can unmute.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello. I have been, for a few months, researching and figuring out what in the heck is going on with the school district. I'm very disappointed. I moved into this district four and a half years ago from Capital Unified School District because I wanted a better education for my kids. And we will be leaving this district next month because I am absolutely disappointed, appalled, and beyond frustrated with how things have been handled. Return, I haven't gotten return phone calls when I've called teachers and principals and superintendents or counselors. I haven't gotten returned emails. I am mostly frustrated that in seven months and with four small schools, we haven't been able to come up with creative solutions to handle a pandemic that a lot of other districts with tons more students have been able to figure out. There's no excuse. We have the resources. We have the funding. It's an embarrassment to our district. It's an embarrassment for these kids to have this kind of an education right now. I am sad. I'm really sad that it's come to this point that there's this many frustrated kids and teachers and that nobody seems to be able to be heard and use their voice and that it seems like we don't matter to the school board and to the superintendent. I don't know why the teachers and staff are not in their classrooms, teaching from their classrooms right now. Why aren't the counselors in their offices with their doors open and having one-on-one interaction with kids six feet, eight feet, 10 feet apart? Why doesn't Dr. Keller have his office open to mentor kids going through mental and emotional problems? Why are these things not happening? They're easy solutions, and nothing is being done, and there's no transparency. And I'm absolutely mind-blown that in seven months, you guys haven't been able to put together a decent plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, how many more hands do we have? We have, well, counting Chad and Liz, we have four hands. Okay, so we've already filled the 20 minutes of public comments. So for those attendees watching, we just need a motion to extend the public comment time. That's what we're doing. Okay, so move. Carol, thank you. I'll second it.
Second.
So this will extend to hear it. Can we do a roll call vote, please, Victoria?
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
He said yes. I saw it.
Member Vickers? Oh, he said no. Wait a minute. Let's get member Kelly back.
Oh, sorry, member Kelly. Oh, I think he is saying no. I can't hear you. I can only see your mouth. Sorry.
He needs to unmute.
Go ahead. You're unmuted, Dr. Kelly.
Okay.
What is your vote?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes. And I want to apologize that I have to keep turning off my video, but I have three kids all in classes or lessons, so they keep taking my bandwidth.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion carries for one. And we'll continue our hands raised public comment. So let's hope that Liz and Chad can figure out their sound issues, and we can bring somebody back.
back in.
So I'll start with Matthew and then Mallory, and then I'll go back to them.
Okay.
So Matthew, you can go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi there, my name is actually Emily Volfing-Gumo. I grew up in Laguna, and I, as a graduate of all of the schools in Laguna, I just want to express an immense amount of gratitude to all you guys have done. It's not perfect, nothing has been perfect throughout this, no one has the right answers, we are all figuring it out as it goes. And it has been extremely hard to watch our community, the community that I was raised in, that means everything to me, to pull each other apart over children and their education. This is our school district, we have built this community up in so many ways, and I just, I implore people who are being so harsh and mean and one-sided on both sides to think about the fact that we are part of Laguna Beach. We work so hard to be a part of this community and respect the people on the school board who are there. You guys are showing up, whether I voted for you or not, you guys are showing up. You are doing your job, and I appreciate it, and you are listening to the community, and I appreciate that. But let's have a little bit more of a community belief in what we're doing. There are families in this community on both sides who disagree, but we can agree that we need to take care of the children, and it doesn't have to be this hateful, mean, vicious thing. I've ended every school board meeting in the last couple of months with tears. I've cried because of what you guys have received and what our kids are going through. I just want everyone to think about how we, at the end of the day, we are Laguna Beach, kids, families, we are one. Let's spend a little bit more time taking care and loving one another.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, next we have Mallory. Oh, so Mallory, it looks like you're using an older version of Zoom. So I'm not, it appears that we cannot...
Somebody's getting text messages, can you silence your...
It's my timer, sorry.
Oh, it's your timer.
That's my timer. I didn't turn it off from the last one.
Okay.
So let me try.
Sorry, Mallory, I think that's right, we're on the most advanced version.
Sorry. Yeah, it won't allow me to.
Can the other two people who we couldn't hear before come on?
So Chad is still has his hand up, so let me try Chad again.
Okay.
Chad, you can unmute and make your comment. It never unmutes for him, it's interesting. Okay, so I... I think he's unmuted.
Okay.
Are you there, Chad? We just can't hear him. He is unmuted, I can see that on the screen, but I cannot, I don't hear anything. I'm so sorry, Chad. I'm not sure what the issue is, whether it's the software.
Okay, so we have another comment, April Keller.
Okay.
So April, you are able to unmute.
Oh, sorry, this is actually Mallory Keller, transfer devices. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to all the people who helped make the Virtual Academy and the trimester hybrid model happen because my grades, I currently have math and science right now, my grades have never been better because I'm able to have focused and more helpful and more structural help from my teachers, which I really extremely appreciate.
Mallory, take a breath, take a breath, I can feel you, just take a breath, we're totally here listening to you, but take a good breath. We're here. Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to say...
No, I totally feel you.
We've been able to help me really strongly, and I extremely appreciate it to all the people who helped make the Virtual Academy and the trimester hybrid model happen. I'm very grateful for them.
Thank you, Mallory. I feel you, Mallory, I've had to take a lot of breaths in the last nine months. I just want to relate, gosh, got me a little emotional. Anybody else, sorry?
Yes, we have Patty Compton. Patty, you can unmute.
Hi, thank you all for being here tonight, and what I wanted to say is that I have two high school students, and the issue that a lot of the parents are having, besides the fact that the trimesters aren't working very well, is that the lack of communication with the parent community is really unacceptable. We've heard, the emails aren't being returned, phone calls aren't being returned, there's no, you know, Dr. Valoria hasn't, you know, done a video explaining this to us, there's been no communication from Dr. Valoria to the parent community, and it's causing all of the parents to become very concerned about what's happening. So, you know, besides what everyone said tonight about the actual education being subpar, the communication to the parents has been abysmal. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
So Chad is back.
Okay, we'll try him again. So Chad, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful. So sorry about that. So I wanted to thank you for taking the time tonight and also for extending the time. I think that, for me, is very meaningful that you guys do want to listen and hear from the citizens and the students and parents, so I appreciate that. Just real quickly, I would say that in anything that we do, any decisions we make, there are costs and benefits, right, and risks and rewards. And right now, the risks, to me, are much more on the side of the damage that's being done to the kids in terms of their education, their socialization, et cetera. You've heard plenty on that issue. In terms of the risk of reopening, I just think, of course, there's always some risk, but I can tell you, and you're probably aware, but if you look at the cal.gov website that lays out COVID numbers, including deaths, there have been zero deaths of 0 to 17-year-olds in California, zero. So it's, and obviously you want to protect against any, you know, sickness, et cetera, but just to compare it, there are, you know, typically hundreds of deaths due to the seasonal flu every year. So in the nation this year, there are far more deaths of kids, 0 to 18-year-olds, from the seasonal flu than there are of COVID. So this notion that it's risky to our kids, yeah, there's always some risk, but you have to manage it and measure it against other risks, of course. So I guess my point there is that if we think it's so dangerous to have our kids in school, you know, due to COVID, then we would have to shut down schools every year because of the flu, which is much more dangerous to kids than COVID. I get we're also considering risk to parents, families, teachers, which I appreciate, but even there, the risk of death or serious illness is actually very low. Obviously, the case numbers are very low in Orange County right now. There's schools around the country that are open, and I have heard of no deaths resulting from it, and I'm pretty sure, given the media, you know, kind of slant, in my view, to, I guess, strike fear in people, we would certainly hear...
That was three minutes. Thank you, Chad, and thanks for your patience on trying to log in with us. We apologize if that was something going on. Any other hands raised? No, I don't see any.
Okay, I'm going to end the public comment portion of this, and now we'll go to the reopening plan, Dr. Valoria.
So I'm going to pass it to Dr. Winston, I'm going to share my screen, though, and
Okay.
control the slides, so here we go.
Thank you. And just to confirm with people, this is for a November 23rd opening date. Okay, well, thank you. So obviously, over the last several weeks, we've been working with our staff to design improvements to our secondary reopening plans in anticipation of their return. In this presentation this evening, we'll describe these recommended changes for the board, for your discussion and consideration. So in July, you may recall, we have a little bit of background to share with you, the board approved reopening plans and approved distance learning, or Phase 1 of our plans through the end of the first trimester. In September, after board consideration of the elementary waiver application and Orange County moving into the red tier, the board approved a staggered approach to reopening, starting with TK through 2nd grade and students with disabilities and self-contained programs starting on October 5th, and 3rd through 5th grade on October 7th. And in September, the board had requested that we review the reopening at secondary schools at this meeting scheduled for this evening. Next slide. So we'd like to remind the board of the schedules that are currently approved in the playbook for Phase 2. So this first slide shows you the current Thurston Phase 2 hybrid schedule, which has not yet been implemented. In this model, students were intended to attend in person two days a week, the course blocks were 90 minutes with a 30-minute advisory period, and then on days when students do not attend school, teachers could provide asynchronous learning activities that students would complete on their own time. Again, this is the current approved schedule, has not yet been implemented. On the next slide, you see the Laguna Beach High School, similar configuration, currently approved. Students would attend in person two days a week. In this model, the course blocks were two hours with no advisory period, and on days when students do not attend school, teachers would provide asynchronous learning activities. So in the current model, when we transitioned to Phase 2, synchronous instruction decreases, which has been noted by many of the comments, but in-person class sizes also decrease. So teachers have more flexibility with instructional strategies in person than remotely. The current model slated students in each course into one of three cohorts, two of them in person, and one cohort of only distance learning students. At the time that this model was designed, we did not have consistent technology that we would have to be able to successfully support simultaneous classroom live streaming in an engaging way. So we had looked at a robot camera that follows the teacher, there were backordering issues even during the summer months when we were looking at it, and there were also some student privacy concerns with its use. But we now have a new option, which I will share with you in a moment. We have heard from parents, as have you, about a decrease in direct teacher-supported instruction in transitioning from the Phase 1 to Phase 2 model. And we've also heard from teachers concerned about planning engaging asynchronous learning experiences for distance learning students and for cohorts who are on their non-in-person day of instruction, so on their off day. We had examined practices that other districts are using as well, including those who are attempting a similar approach of simultaneous instruction. And there are some concerns about simultaneous instruction and its potential for becoming essentially distance learning in the classroom, where students are logging into Zoom for instruction but sitting in the class. So the goal of in-person learning is really to be able to use a combination of more robust instructional methods, so students get that benefit of in-person learning, along with engaging our distance learners at home. So the next slide. So we have consulted with our leadership team and looped out to our staff members at the secondary sites regarding some proposed changes we're going to recommend to the currently approved schedules. On the next slide, oop, sorry, backup went. Thank you. Based on the feedback we receive, we want to increase the teacher-directed time in the Phase 2 schedule, particularly for students who aren't attending in person, whether they are 100% distance learning or if they're on their non-in-person day of instruction. I don't like calling it an off day because it's not an off day, there is learning that needs to be taking place, so it's a non-in-person day. But we have identified and procured technology that would support simultaneous in-person and distance learning instruction where it is appropriate for instructional content and lesson design. So we also wanted to include time in the schedule for individual or small group support or assessment. This was one intent of the middle school advisory period, but it was really more efficient to build it into the schedule in a different manner. Okay, so on the next slide. Okay, so I'm going to walk you through some of these proposed changes. So in the proposed Thurston schedule for students returning to in-person learning, you can see here on these charts, it's a Monday and Wednesday cohort A, cohort B, and a Tuesday/Thursday cohort A, cohort B. So you can kind of see, if you look at the groupings, that part has not changed. So students would still attend in person on their assigned day, or they'll participate in two-hour instructional blocks for each course virtually each day. Once students are dismissed and return home, there's 30 minutes built in for remote distance learning, small group intervention, or support, or assessment. So that's teacher-assigned, teacher-directed. There's not an attendance component for that session because it's in excess of their required instructional minutes, however, it does provide an opportunity for students to access their teachers and get support. So this model does increase the amount of teacher-directed time in the schedule. On days when students do not attend in person, they'll still log into their virtual classroom at the class start time and participate in some sort of daily live interaction. We know that teachers use a variety of instructional scenarios to engage in-person and distance learning students. Teachers generally do not lecture for two-hour blocks, as that would not be an engaging experience conducive to student learning in most cases. So the teacher may provide direct instruction for a portion of a period, provide a collaborative activity such as a discussion, or an assignment like a group presentation. And there are ways to engage both your distance learning students and your in-person students in that work. So there are also other methods, such as collaborative projects, performances, interactive activities, and so the key will be really to support our teachers in continuing to use these research-based methods to engage the two groups of students at the same time. Next slide. So this is the Thurston, what it would look like for someone who is 100% distance learning. So a student that, because remember in the trimester hybrid model, students still have the option to remain virtual at home. So for students who are 100% distance learning, the schedule is very similar to the current Phase 1 schedule. It includes the two-hour daily, two-hour instructional blocks for each course. It also includes the 30-minute session in the afternoon where students can get support from their teachers. The next slide. So at the high school level, similar to Thurston, for students returning to in-person learning, students would attend in person on their assigned day, or again, participate in two-hour instructional blocks virtually each day. Once those students are dismissed and return home, there's 30 minutes built in for that small group intervention and support. And again, for students who are 100% distance learning in the high school model, it's very similar to the current Phase 1 schedule. It includes the two-hour instructional blocks and also the 30-minute session in the afternoon. and also the 30-minute session in the afternoon where students need support or can get support. So the proposed changes to the schedule increase the amount of direct teacher instructional time. It does require some new technology, which I'll share with you momentarily. And unfortunately, Mike Morrison's not here to, to assist and probably do a much better job of explaining it, but I'll do my best. So we have that new technology. We also have a plan for teacher training on the use of the technology as well as instructional strategies for teaching students in a remote environment while also teaching students in person. Now, some content, so for example, PE or certain lesson designs like labs may not be conducive to a direct instruction format where you're simultaneously having students in, in both formats. So the amount of time online may vary in a particular course depending on the lesson objective or the content that's being, that's being assigned or, or taught. The next slide. All right, so here's the technology tools. It's a document camera package and there's multiple components to it. But, but this technology is a special document camera that has an easy-to-switch camera format. So you can go from zooming out to a wide shot, to zooming in, to switching to your Apple TV, to your, to like your slide deck, if you're presenting that. And what's nice is it has a wide-angle lens that can display the whole front of the room. So some of the concerns about using a regular camera or like an iPad to livestream was how to ensure, for one thing, that the teacher is able to be heard by the students who are participating in distance learning, but also student privacy. So if a teacher needs to have a one-on-one discussion with a student, how do we ensure that, you know, not every student hears it? And so with this combination of devices, a teacher can easily mute their microphone, because it does connect to a microphone, to have a one-on-one discussion with a particular student without, you know, every student in the, in the class, whether online or in person, being able to hear it. So there's, there's several components to this, but it has a lot of the functionality that we were looking for to be able to be very flexible in different formats. So you can see in the tiny little photo there, there's, it's actually being used to teach piano or demonstrate a lab or, you know, show a, the front of the classroom.
So our professor-
That's awesome, Dr. Winston, by the way. That's a great find. Yeah, that was, that was Mr. Morrison, so. He's feeling better. So we have developed a professional learning plan for our staff using our amazing technology TOSSAs and our tech leads. So next week, we can begin teacher training through demonstrations and helping teachers think through, okay, how's this going to work in my classroom? How would I configure this for my space and for the content that I teach? And then in the following weeks, teachers will have an opportunity to practice. We're encouraging teachers to actually use the technology to teach their distance learning students so that they become familiar with it before they have two groups at a time. And so we will also offer training sessions on instructional strategies and lesson design for simultaneous teaching. And then, of course, we've built in ongoing support. We know that, that teachers are, are in a variety of different places on the technology use continuum. Some will jump in and be very comfortable. Some will be more reticent and need a lot more support. And, and we're, we're ready to provide the different levels of support that are needed. So the other component of the reopening plan that we want to address is to increase in-person support for identified students with disabilities and English learners. So as you know, currently, our TK through five and six through 12 students in self-contained programs have returned for in-person learning as the board has approved. Students with disabilities who are not in self-contained programs and English learners in, in the secondary grades are currently from being provided support virtually. And this method is not working for some groups of students with these special learning needs. So we are recommending a learning center model that would provide additional support to identified students with disabilities who, or are English learners. So these are students who are not performing well. They're exhibiting skill deficits and attending weaknesses. So basically, they're not able to engage or participate in virtual learning. And so the learning center environment would be a nurturing environment where welcoming staff that would include a certificated teacher and instructional aides who are already working with the students. The students would receive individualized student attention to navigate instruction. They would be provided one-to-one support if needed to complete course assignments. And they would be receiving support and having discussions with teachers as needed in private meetings. They would be given those brain breaks that are needed to promote stamina and encourage their attend, attention and engagement. And then they, they could be provided incentives to increase productivity as well. So we identified students with disabilities or English learners based on teacher report who exhibit these specific difficulties. And I should just mention, so we're, we're looking at roughly 10 to, seven to 10 students at Thurston, 10 to 15 students at the high school that we would like to bring into this learning center model within the next week or so. So in addition to the health and safety measures that are identified in the playbook, we have found that the day-in-the-life documents, webinars and orientations were really helpful for elementary students and parents and staff as they were prepared to return to our campuses. So we would propose to do this, a similar model for secondary. We would also offer the optional COVID-19 testing for students in anticipation of their return. So our recommendation for your consideration this evening is to approve these revisions as we've presented them and allow us to open an in-person learning center for those identified students with disabilities and English learners. With that, we can take any questions.
I want to remind board members that this is an action item. Based on the recommendations, you can ask questions right now.
I have is at the end of the day, when the student can have that special help time, is that, how does that work? If it's kind of a private question, does the teacher mute the other? Do they wait in a line? How does that?
You're breaking up a little bit, but I think I have your, I think I can respond to your question. So there's a couple of different ways teachers can do it. Teachers can assign certain students because we know not all students know to ask for help. And a teacher may say, hey, you know, I noticed XYZ, so I want you to come to my afternoon session. So that's one way that teachers could do it. Another way could be to designate a portion of that time or have a certain day where students can have individual help. And so what usually, when that happens, teachers, I think they're doing that now where they can utilize the waiting room. So while a student has an individual question, the remaining students can be put in the waiting room during that time if that's, if that's the case. I mean, the teacher has a lot of flexibility in terms of how to arrange that time to best serve their students. But, but we wanted to make sure that that time was, was available.
Board members, we're just doing questions right now.
Wasn't that a question?
Yeah, I just am reminding the other board members. Yeah, not just you, just everybody, just so they know where we are in the process. How about this? I can just ask for a motion to approve the recommendations. Okay, I'll second it. And then we can have an open discussion. And student board reps, if you'd like to have any comments, you can also provide input.
I would really love to give a student perspective on this because I think it's really important right now to, you know, understand what it's like. And I would just like to say, I totally understand both sides of the spectrum. I mean, we had someone, a student cry because of how much they like it. It's helping them and then parents angry about, you know, how it's affecting. And I get both sides. It's tough literally no matter what we do. I mean, we're forced into the situation that we have never been in before. So it's crazy that no matter, like either situation will end up being clearly fine and back to normal. That won't happen, I really don't think. But, you know, I think we're really doing the best we can. And at this moment, I, I, I know personally, teachers are really doing the best they can and working a lot harder that we mean, parents and even students may not even see like on the weekends and just they're working overtime. And it's, it's a lot of work that we're not really seeing. And I definitely really appreciate that so much. And I just, it's tough no matter what. And I think us as a community and especially as students need to just realize that we do live in a community that is very privileged compared to a lot of other places that we are even able to all have some sort of electronic device to log in every day. And even if it's tough and it's not fun and, you know, it's not always the best for learning, but we're able to do that. And, you know, that's not a lot of places that can do that. And I think it's amazing, the technology that we have been getting to be able to reopen in person, right? Where everyone will still be involved in a very safe way if they have genuine health issues or their parents have immune deficient or cancer that, you know, the virus is a huge risk and they could die. That it's safe for them. And it's also to the kids who do need to go back to school and need that interaction because I get both sides, I really do. So I think it's hard no matter what and I appreciate everything that's been happening. And I think there's just a lot that needs to be considered. And I think we're doing great for what we're stuck in.
Thanks, Johanna. Any other board members have questions or comments?
We have a motion. We're in discussion, right?
We're in discussion. We have a motion and a second.
Does our other student rep want to weigh in? I like to hear what the students say.
Soren, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not directed moment, but I might like to speak a little bit.
Okay. I'd like to add something. I like that you added more direct instruction from the teachers. I like that you looked at the model. Those cameras are amazing, so kudos to Mr. Morrison. And I appreciate that that's something that's available now and I like the expansive ability of it. The other feature is I like that we're thinking about our kids who with the disabilities and English learners. I think that's a valuable input. Having the self-contained classrooms back and things like that shows us what's possible. And I am grateful to the teachers for having to do all this new training with this camera and things like that because it is a different style of teaching than just having 20 kids in your room. It's going to be a whole different experience. And we're looking at, I wanted to ask whether you're, everyone's feels suitable that we don't need to stagger the secondary. We can start on the first day, the 23rd for everyone, but we'll give them some advanced knowledge about the campus or where the egress and ingress, are we doing something to communicate with, particularly our sixth graders new to Thurston campus and our ninth graders new to high school.
And to go along with that, what would that first week look like? Because it's, how's that going to look?
So to answer the question first, member Wolf, yes, the, the site administrators are looking at ways to give really specific instructions to our sixth graders who've never been on the Thurston campus and the ninth graders who have not really been on the high school campus as well. So that's part of their communication plan. That'll be coming forward, assuming board approval of the schedule here. We wanted to wait to do any kind of outreach to the, the students and until we had actually a schedule revision done that we felt was necessary. So that was what the timing was for the 22nd, obviously, which is today. So yes, we want to be able to make sure that we're doing enough to educate. And that's what Dr. Winston was mentioning that worked well, the webinars. But also, you know, are there ways we, that we might be able to bring the students back on or invite them back on sixth graders the week ahead and stagger them, walk them around and give them an opportunity. The first week will be Thanksgiving week, at which we have school on Monday and Tuesday. So it will be a Monday and Tuesday schedule. So the students, it will allow the students to come on campus if you are the A on Monday in the schedule. And then obviously, the Tuesday would be the B. So each group would have an opportunity to come onto campus one time that week and get used to the flow. And then obviously, upon return the following week, they would be back into a full five days of classes that week. So that would be the, the start of that, that time period.
Dr. Valoria, if there is a COVID outbreak at one school, since we're a small district, I know you talked about this so many meetings ago. Does that mean all four school sites would have to close?
So if one school in our district has to close, the, the rule at this time is that if 25% of your schools have to close due to an outbreak, well, that would be, you know, 25% would be one school for us. So yes, the, it would be closed for 14 days. It's not closed permanently, it would be closed for 14 days. And then assuming the outbreak was addressed at whatever school, if that was to happen, then we would obviously be able to reopen at that time, so.
And the percentage that constitutes an outbreak?
I believe the percentage is 5% over 14 days. So 5% of the student population testing positive on 14-day period.
So at the current time with the results that we're getting, we're very, very low.
Correct. So our percentages as a, as a district numbers in terms of staff and students is low. We're not there.
But we don't, how do we know? We don't know how they're testing because we're not testing them, so.
Correct. So, you know.
It's low because it's not counted, it doesn't.
Yes, we wouldn't know for sure. But, but what the Orange County Healthcare Agency, as they contact trace, they have created a definition of an outbreak, which is three or more cases that are tied together. But that definition of outbreak does not apply to the school until it becomes 5%. But they're going to do their contact tracing and testing accordingly. So again, you know, I, I would say that it seems as though things change. I don't know if this will, this, you know, will change or evolve as the, the fall kicks in here, but we'll see.
It's like the clarification that's six feet for 15 minutes over 24-hour period is very different than, right, six feet for 15 minutes all at one time, right? So that's, that's a very different.
That is.
And that just changed today, right? Yeah.
And that is the new guidance that we will be following as we contact trace. It's six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes over a 24-hour period.
Okay.
I just, I think that this addresses one of the concerns that we've heard repeatedly, which is more contact with teachers. And at this time, have the teachers been aware of the addition of these document cameras and, and the training? I mean, do they know about that that's coming?
Yes, we, over the last few weeks, have done kind of an extensive outreach process through the principals, a meeting with their school staffs to, you know, kind of share ideas, gather input, bring the input back. Then we, we work on it some more, share it back out. So kind of like an accordion process is, is kind of how we have worked through that over the last few weeks.
And overall, with a supportive reaction?
Yes, I think we heard Ms. Hopper mention tonight that they're, they're in support of, you know, our teachers have been very flexible. And I think, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I think everyone has a different comfort level with technology. And this is a new experience for all of our teachers to be able to teach, you know, students who are at home and students who are in person. And it requires a, a different, you know, some kind of creative thinking, lesson redesign, or they're looking at lessons differently and how can I adapt, you know, this particular activity or this activity? But I, I think if I know anything about our teachers, they will rise to the occasion and, and they will make it work. That's, that's what they've demonstrated with distance learning. When you think of how far we've come since the spring, I, I think they're willing, on, as a whole, I think they're willing to engage in the work.
Seems like a very positive next step as far as, you know, a while back, thinking that we couldn't do anything like this, that continuing to look at it and to research it and to find a way to do it. So I, I just think it's a, it's a good change. And as I said already, one that we've heard concerns about, which was contact, direct contact with teachers, more in-person. So that's it. I just had a quick question that I thought of when they mentioned the incoming sixth and incoming ninth. Since I have been observing that the various sports teams have been pretty active with conditioning training, have at the high school, we included incoming ninth graders that wanted to be on the teams. Does anyone know that yet?
Yes, my understanding is those ninth graders are, that are participating, but I'd have to verify if that's all sports. But my understanding is yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Um, so this would be enacted so attendees know November 23rd, except for the kind of customized plan for English learners and our students with disabilities that have been identified. You might start that sooner.
You might start that sooner when it could be done. Is there any other detail that we need to?
Was that an actual, was there a plan to start that group sooner?
Yeah, she said in the presentation in the next week or so.
In the next week? I guess I missed that. There was a lot in that presentation.
Right, and there's a.
That was the part tied to the learning center?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the small group of the seven to 12 or 10 or so. Okay. And they, they've been identified out of what's been going on so far in first trimester. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's right. Thank you. And.
President Wolf?
Yes?
I have a few comments.
Okay.
First, I want to thank all the parents who have worked with us on developing the distance learning model and understanding what the trimester system was about and why we as a board supported our teachers and administrators on supporting not coming back until the trimester was over. You can't pull out the rug under teachers who have started a model, which was new and challenging to them halfway through and expect them to be able to jump back into the classrooms. So I, I just want to make sure that everyone understands the reason why we as a board supported continuing to the end of the first trimester. I also wanted to talk about that the next six weeks is supposed to be the worst for the country concerning COVID. And the nice thing is, you know, even if we're, we're not going back until that's, that's over, but it's, it's a real challenging thing for the whole, the whole country. Chad made a very good point about the flu. And I'm hoping that all the parents out there understand that the flu and COVID can be a disaster and that how important it is to have your child and yourselves immunized against the flu. Flu shots are available now and everyone should be, should be getting them. As a former dean of the College of Health at Cal State LA and as a colleague of Congressman Roy Ball, who reported to me and who, if you watch anything on CNN or any other channel, you'll see the CDC, you'll see his name as he basically was responsible for building all the new buildings at the CDC. Flu shots are very, very important, particularly this year for all of our teachers, staff and, and students. Because everything can be closed down again if this gets out of hand. And again, I want to give a plug to the New York Times that they do a really good job of being on top of the, all the research that's going on and presented in such a way that we can all understand it. So you can get for free every day, newyorktimes.com/schoolbriefing in your mailbox so that you can be up on what's happening nationwide about COVID and the flu. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions or comments before we?
I do.
Yes.
I do.
Okay, so I have Board Member Perry.
Go ahead, Board. Go ahead.
Yeah. Go ahead, Board Member Perry.
Okay, thanks. I commend the staff for doing this, coming up with a lot more time in class for students. I mean, I hope we can even do more, but I really appreciate what you've done. I think the learning center is a wonderful idea and think that really will help that population. I'm wondering if you could work a little bit on the, on the classes from the standpoint of hearing from parents, sometimes students in one of the trimesters only have one class or going to be out early. Or, you know, hearing from parents who say their seniors are going to be done in March and that wasn't what they wanted. So kind of the class scheduling, it would be great if you could work on that a little bit more. Thanks.
In response to the class scheduling, that would be difficult to work on because students have signed up for things and it's a global pandemic and we have a trimester model. I have a daughter who's a senior too, and so her class schedule is a little wonky this year. And it's a pandemic and I, we're adjusting. I'm, I'm not, we can't just add classes for people. I don't.
Well, I, I mean, if your daughter finishing in March.
My daughter will not have many classes the last two trimesters. Yes.
And, and some of these students that only have one class are freshmen? I mean, I, I really think we could do better. Sorry.
I, I don't think that's possible at the high school. They have to take six classes as a freshman. I think the requirement is, I don't think that's true actually.
Well, when you group PE and their extracurricular together, if they're playing a sport and not PE, then I think that's what that is. So that looks like they have a class, right? But then next trimester, they'll have two difficult classes and then, right? So I think that's what kind of like, I, I have friends who their kids only have band. Right, that's all they have is trimester. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, Carol, you were next, Board Member Norman.
Well, no, I don't, I don't mind waiting.
No, I'm done.
I'm good.
No, no, we have a student who wants to speak.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't looking at the right square. There's a lot of squares tonight. Soren, was it you wanted to speak?
Yes, please. So just responding to that thing about the classes, so for students that don't have, don't have any classes, that's not necessarily a problem of the, of the system. That's more of the classes they chose. So for instance, I'm in six classes and I will have, or yeah, a little over six classes, but my schedule I'll have two, two, and then one. And I think that that's just how it works out. So if students chose fewer classes, they had fewer classes. That was just going to happen. And also I'd like to speak first as the student rep and then as an individual. And first off, I want to open with a quote from someone who has influenced probably all of our lives who enjoy reading. So here it is. "Differences of habit in mind are nothing at all if our aims are identical and our hearts open." And that is from Dumbledore from Harry Potter. Starting off with that, I would just like to say that, you know, I think that there's a lot of differences going on right now. I think that we, we, we hear the, the anger from parents and students, you know, we hear everything that's going on. All I can say is I'm happy I'm not up for reelection, but I don't get to vote, so I'll, I'll take it. But going, going to that, you know, I think that we hear the pain. And as a student rep, I like, I, it is very clear to me that there are many students who are suffering. And I think that their suffering is not necessarily one, a result of the schools or the teachers. There's a balance here. I think some students that are not, that are, don't feel engaged. There's, there's a part of effort that has to be met. And these are teachers who are teaching in a way they've never been taught before, in a way they never expected to teach before. And personally in classes, I struggle with math. I tell you, it has taken a lot more energy to pay attention to that screen than has to actually learn the information, but I'm doing it. And I think that's, that's, that's the part where students have to meet the teachers. And of course, there are cases where students don't feel like they're connected enough. And I think that it would be, it would be nice if the, the possibilities of students coming back on their disabilities could possibly be expanded to students who really feel like they're struggling. I think for some students, having that in-person contact, whether that's with face masks, whether that's social distancing, that could happen outside of school hours or some sort of system that, that could help as well for certain students. And I think that there's, finally, it's, you know, we need to have good social emotional support. And for those parents who are concerned about, about us not being enough, I think, I, I've worked very closely with the, the social emotional team on many projects. And I tell you, that, that they're trying, they're trying to look for ways. One of those ways is, something that I've been, spent a lot of time on, John, is creating a mentorship initiative, which will start this year, and will partner students and teachers together. And so if you, if you have a student that feels like they're really losing their connection to school, I highly encourage you to reach out, to have them reach out to me, soren dot cibleboc dot org. And they can be part of a new mentorship initiative where they would have that connection they're missing. Now, to speak as an individual, this is 100% my own beliefs. I think that we need to, that we need to, we need to ask ourselves, are we being purposeful here? Are we speaking because we have a goal in mind? Or are we speaking because we are angry and hurt? And there's a difference in that. There's a big distinction that. And I would like to say that I try to speak as purposely as possible. So I say this as an individual, I think that everyone, everyone is doing their absolute best. I think students are doing their absolute best, teachers are doing their absolute best, administration's doing their absolute best to achieve the results that we need to have. And it is very, very, very less than ideal, but everyone is trying very hard, I promise you. I'm working with these people as student board rep, as, you know, and extracurriculars and teachers and administration are trying, you know, they, they, teachers, their job is to be there for students. Administration, they, they wanted to work with students. And we're all doing our very best here to make sure that happens in a way that's safe. And finally, you know, I just want everyone to remember that we are a community here. And I understand there's, there's anger, there is hate, and that is very unfortunate. I want everyone to look, look within and really ask yourself, are you being purposeful and directing that energy? You know, could, if your student is really struggling, you know, well, let's find solutions. If you'd like to reach out to me, I will work with your student. I will, I have friends who would, I'm sure would be open to tutoring, whether it's younger children in all ages. I think we can work with that. And we are all here to help. And, you know, as I'm sure the board members are probably avoiding speaking to, you know, the anger because they are for reelection. You know, I think that it's, you know, we hear you and we're here for you. And I just want to say that, that, you know, we're all, we're all doing our very best to make sure this happens in a good manner. So just keep in mind the words of Dumbledore, you know, united, our aims are identical and our hearts open. So let's try to keep our hearts open in these crazy times. Have empathy for those who are dealing with this difficulty. Have compassion for the teachers, have compassion for the students, and have compassion for the parents. You know, we understand that as my mom is, you know, she makes us a meal for break, she makes us a meal for lunch and after school and wakes up early in the morning. And, you know, that, that's not something that she, and she also has a full-time job, you know? And I think that that's a lot to ask of our parents, but we are all doing our very best here. And we all need to have compassion for each other in these very, very, very difficult times. And we will get through this. We are working hard. The plan that was proposed here has ways where we're speaking to the, speaking to the distraction, where we're speaking to these issues that people have. We're increasing the time that students are available for teachers. We're increasing the technology available so that students who are, who was just at home for health reasons, have that access. And we're all doing our very best here. So I just urge everyone to please have compassion. We all have the same aim. We all want to get, help students. We want to help everyone here. And let's try to keep our hearts open through this very difficult time.
Thanks, Soren. That was excellent. Oh, you made my heart feel warm there. Thank you. And Johanna too. The students really know how to speak well. This is so impressive. Yes, Board Member Vickers.
Not only do they know how to speak well, but I think we can take a real lesson learned from their attitude and their perspective and their, and their compassion. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have a comment or a question or anything directed at the plan before we do a vote?
Johanna had a, she had a comment.
Comment, I'm not sure if she still does, but I know I saw her trying to make a comment earlier, so.
It was, it's kind of passed now, but it was just about the class situation. And I just, I know like everyone, each grade has a requirement, how many classes they have to take. And I mean, at the time, there's no changing that. And I think that's simply a student choice. And I don't think, you know, that's something that the staff has to like force to change. Because I know even like regular school, some seniors have like, what, like three or four classes? And like, they got out at like 11 or something. So normally, so I think there's a lot to do there. I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Johanna. Anyone else have last comments? Sorry, Board Member Normandin?
I was gonna comment in response to some of the comments we've received, both in writing and, and tonight in, in speaking from Collins. But when we do get a court, we get queries outside of public comment. I think Jan probably could talk to it better than I could, but most of our comments are outside of public comment. So I know someone was asking about that. And the majority of communications I've received are from parents that want their children returned, but once the virus is suppressed, through whatever that means and looking towards the leadership of what does that mean, right? Not dictating that. So that, to answer the first part of that question, another one was, just like what was said, I mean, none of us want any kid to be in crisis or to struggle or to lack support or connection. And so none of us on this board, none of us on this, in this meeting want that. And, and normally people only think of us, of the board, is when they're mad. Unfortunately, when they're mad about something, right, they think about us. But we only volunteer our time because we care about kids. We just care about them. And so that's why we're here. And then I do want to address the kind of, every, the grass is greener elsewhere. Everyone else is doing it. You know, I went and spent a lot of time just kind of looking at what everyone else is doing because it's a common, it's common for us to do that, to, to, to think that the grass is greener. And so there's a site that I don't know how to pronounce the name of. It's B U R B I O, or herbio? B U R B I O dot com. And it did a survey, a sampling of the 1,200 public school districts across all of the United States, just came out today. Or their final, their data was updated today. And they looked at all in-person, hybrid and distant learning and how many students in each of those categories were in each of those categories at the public schools. They didn't look at private, it was public only. They found that in California, Washington, Maryland, Oregon and Hawaii, that while they offered all three modalities, that currently more than 90% of students were in a distant learning, online only modality. And they found the vast majority of districts in California have announced that they'll be online either throughout the year, the whole school year, or that they'll make the decision at the end of the semester, trimester, wherever their break is, right? So for the majority of them, it was January and because that's where their break was. So I, I know that we all feel that our kids are going to miss out or lose out. It's a global pandemic. We're in it together, all of us globally. And if we spend time as, we had callers come in and both of our student reps, like making the best of what we have right now, we'll look back upon this time with, with a lot of pride and actually maybe even missing some things that we're experiencing that we don't get to experience when things are, you know, back to normal. And I know I'm going to sound like Groundhog Day, and I apologize to my board members for it. But if, if we had, if we had testing where we not just mitigate, we're not, California isn't a minute where we mitigate the virus. But if we had testing where we could suppress it, then we really would all just be moving about. And there are three states in, in the United States that are doing that right now. And it's provided a freedom of normalcy. And I know we'll get there. I know we can get there. And I know with the leadership that we have, that I know Dr. Gloria is constantly asking, looking, inquiring of ways to do things as well as his entire team is. And so I have faith that we will get to that position where we can suppress this virus and all of us actually be sitting together and not on duty. Sorry, I'm Groundhog Day about testing.
That's okay. It's the board meeting. You're a board member. You're allowed to speak. Okay.
I don't, I feel like we've met so much on this issue and I just feel like it's like, like we just, right, it's the same topic.
What I'd like to do is do the vote unless somebody else has some comments. And so the vote, just to reiterate, especially for the attendees, is to reopen secondary on November 23rd with the modifications that were presented tonight, meaning more teacher instruction directed, more synchronous on the days students are at distance. And then we would also be adding in that little caveat for our students with disabilities and English learners to have a learning center that might open sometime in the next week or so. We're gonna have.
Can we divide those two motions though? Please?
Sure. So I will make a motion that we open on November 23rd for secondary with the.
We have, there's a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah. The motion's already full. Yeah.
That's okay.
Let's just stick with it.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. So that's where we are to parents watching. It'll be November 23rd. They'll get information beforehand on the day in the life videos, whatever is needed. So our students are ready to go on campus and understand the structure of how things will work. Does anybody else have a comment before I move to a vote? Okay. Student board rep vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Johanna. Can we do a board member roll call vote, please?
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
I want to say yes on those, that little group of kids and no because of, until we have a testing in place that we can actually keep everybody safe, the whole community safe, it's a present. So for the, for the small pocket, I'm all there. I totally get it.
Have to do one yes or no. Sorry.
No, it's just a no. No, no. So I'm saying no. I just, we're supposed to explain our no. We're not supposed to say no without.
It is appreciated.
That's our, yeah, that's our policy. So I was just explaining, I would say yes if it was a little group. But until we have testing where we can suppress, I am no.
Okay.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion. Uh, yes, so motion carries for one. Um, and that's our plan for the reopening of secondary with the modifications. And now we'll go to our next item. Which is um, our board member requests. And this is board member request for information and suggestions for items for future meetings. And I explained this before, we do this because board members do not have individual authority to work, to direct staff or bring items forward. We operate as an entity and we have to get consensus to bring those items forward. Um, this is an opportunity for live public comment, um, if you're still with us at 9:15. Um, so please raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment during this item, which is board member requests. Yes, so we have, um, our first public comment is XX. You can unmute. Make sure to unmute XX. Okay. I can't hear you XX, I'm not sure if you're connected properly. Board Member Kelly, can you mute your thing? I can hear your papers shuffling. Thank you. We aren't able to hear you XX, so we're gonna pull somebody else in and see if, I'm not sure what the issue is. Thanks for your patience, apologies. Okay, so uh, next comment is Sherry Morgan. You can unmute.
Hi, thank you. I would like to ask, can you please reiterate what you just approved? And what, um, just in one full moment. Um, I understand that you added a couple of things, but the plan is still to open on November 23rd. You're gonna bring special ed kids in next week. Um, but is there any change to anything else, I guess? So can you please just reiterate what you just approved for going back to school? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, so we have Dr. Yvette Lopese. You can unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I don't even know if this is the place to put it. I logged in quite um, late in the game. Um, but I was, when I did log in, I was hearing about, you know, students or parents talking about um, kind of the schedule and these kind of holes, right? And you know, maybe looking at different ways to fill them. So I guess for requests for information, would it be possible um, for maybe some of our kind of, you know, high achieving students at the high school to support teachers in like tutoring groups or, you know, kind of other ways of, of meeting the needs of different kids? Um, I know for my boys, I think it's the socialization piece that they need more, that they're missing more. And I'm just wondering if maybe we can look at kind of those holes or those gaps and maybe fill them in by grouping kids differently, high school kids with middle school kids. Um, and providing, I mean, that way. So I don't know if this is the place for it, but it just in terms of asking for information. I'm just kind of in a problem solving mode, I guess. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, and uh, we still have XX. Do you want me to, I'll go ahead and try one more time? Sorry, I lost my screen for a second. I clicked a wrong button. Um, yes, let's try XX again and see if it comes through. Okay, XX, you can unmute. Or double X, I'm not sure. Double X. We cannot hear you. And so I'm just wondering if it's the software, like if you have an older Zoom version or something, I don't know why. We apologize, we can't hear you XX. It's unmuted, but no sounds coming out. I'm very sorry. You can email all the board members, our email addresses are on the website at LVUSD. If you have something really that you'd like to share, we get lots of emails. So apologies. Um, just to reiterate the motion that we just had, is to reopen schools for secondary, middle and high school on November 23rd with the revised schedule, which has more synchronous learning. And then to the students with disabilities and English learners that have been identified by staff will be coming into a learning center model to get more one-on-one assistance sometime in the next two weeks. And then they will of course be incorporated into the secondary opening as well. We do have one more public comment.
Okay.
President Wolf, uh, Mike Poe, you can unmute.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can, Mike, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you for, you know, all your collective dedication. And uh, unfortunately, I think the public comments today seem to have uh, fallen on one side or the other. Um, but I do think for someone who has listened to all the board meetings, there is a happy medium between some of these comments. And I think it does have something to do with future meetings. Uh, I don't recall the person who said it, but I believe she's running for school board. Uh, oftentimes when you have a business and you send out a conference call, you don't drop a PDF or an extensive Excel file on someone right before you talk about it. And so I think for the benefit of the group, both the board as well as the public, I think it'd be a tremendous help if you can learn the material, perhaps follow along, figure out the colors of the cohort, et cetera. I think also the word transparency as uh, someone, I, I, you know, I thought it was a pretty good job of defining it. Um, I actually would, I would use conflation. I think at times we're conflating things in the sense that uh, in watching, uh, and here's why I would like to support Dr. Valoria. I know that he showed up two different times with what he thought was a plan that was going to be implemented. It went so far as to think that on September 28th, after his comeback for sixth graders, then he, he learned with all of us really that it wasn't going to be an acceptable plan for the board. And I think that's where we can maybe get rid of some of these two or three week times. It shouldn't be a surprise to him on how you all are feeling. And from a standpoint of a parent, we had a survey, then another survey. Then we had a board meeting, actually a third board meeting. And then another survey, the same time that the kids were surveyed. And then ultimately, it seemed that what pushed us over the top was the teachers not wanting to come back for safety reasons at this last board meeting. And all I would say is, if that was what was going to be done, why don't we save the surveys, the engagement, the teachers reminding the kids that we're gonna come back? And just if you're going to go ahead with the teacher's safety aspect, I know Ms. Wolf, that, that changed your mind the last board meeting. Why not take that survey first? And save all that time if that's gonna be the overwhelming reason why we're not going to do it. So with that said, I just, I just did want to put context to some of these comments because uh, I think you're all doing a great job in terms of time. I would have liked to gotten uh, started sooner in the process, but uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I will note that we don't always know what people are thinking ahead of time. And it's a Brown Act violation for the board to meet outside of board meetings, so just to clarify that. This is where we meet. So um, some things are going to be a surprise for all of us. Um, okay, is there any more public comment on this before we go to our board members? Thank you, Dr. Winston.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Um, Johanna, you have something to say? You want to speak? I see your hand up. Do you want to go first?
Um, I just wanted to reply kind of quickly to one of the, I think the lady who said something about like getting students maybe to help, help younger kids. She said specifically tutoring. Um, I'm not totally sure on that, but I just know Luke and I are very strongly, um, or I'm sorry, Soren, are very strongly motivated to be engaged with younger students at TMS and um, the elementary schools. And like, we're totally here if we, if they need help or um, they need to reach out to somebody or if we can coordinate something to help learn or anything, like um, I just want them to know that we're here to help them. That's our main goal.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go around to board member requests. Are we ready? I've done the public comments, I've closed that and just double checking. Someone stop me if I'm rolling. Uh, Board Member Kelly, do you have any board member requests?
I'm back to my soap opera about the nurses. I would like to know what our plan's going to be to have nurses in the high school since we are opening. Particularly since flu season is coming upon us, in particular because COVID is going to be at its highest in the next six weeks. Uh, I'd love to see the district put on a third nurse. Again, as, as former dean of college health at Nurses reported to me, I'm a big fan of nurses.
Okay, so this, I'm just gonna reiterate because we can't have a discussion, but this would be maybe a weekly report on the nurses' schedule or how it would be attached at the secondary schools.
Well, I, I, I prefer to go further as far as a suggestion to hire another nurse. Just a suggestion, you know?
I'm gonna start with a weekly update on those nurses. Anything else, Dr. Kelly?
You're so good.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
It's late, it's past my bedtime. Um, anything else, Dr. Kelly, before I move on? Thank you. Okay, uh, Board Member Perry, your board request.
Here. Um, I was just thinking, I would like to know if there are any classrooms at the middle school or the high school that aren't used every day. I mean, I'm thinking with our, our clever team, perhaps those classrooms could be used for something else with social distancing, not a teacher teaching it, but a, a club or something else. So our kids get more time with each other. And secondly, I wanted to really um, thank our student board reps for talking to the other leaders at Thurston and at El Moro and TOW and really bringing in the younger kids' voice into decisions and what they're, what's going on with them. And you're both really generous to offer to do tutoring for younger people. That's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Perry. Soren, is that your hand up or are you just resting it that way?
No, I was, am I allowed to, in the, I believe it's uh, 604 or something like that? I don't, it doesn't say I can't request information or suggestions?
Um, it, this is, I mean, this is for board members to get consensus to request items. But why don't you give it a try and see what, see what your request is?
Okay, so I guess it's a suggestion for an item. Uh, I believe that we should look to, I don't believe weekly is, is necessary. But I think it'd be important to look at, um, look at data that we gathered this year. And I've briefly talked about this with Dr. Lori, but I think it'd be, it'd be very positive uh, if we could find some ways to find, to see and we possibly measure whether that's a qualitative or quantitative uh, data on student performance and wellbeing during these times. Because unfortunately, it is very likely that in shortly, we may see another pandemic. And I believe that we should be prepared for, or another, or return of the COVID-19. I think it'd be very important to measure these data that we're all talking about, the pain and suffering that students are experiencing. And to get that data so we know how better to support our students and staff and parents during these times.
Just to address it, Soren, I'm going to gather that the California Department of Ed with the Healthy Kids Survey will be doing something that's attached to mental health that I think will come through this year somehow. Dr. Valoria, do you want to nod if?
We're gonna do challenge success again. So we'll be able to look at some comparison data there. So, Soren and I met and had a discussion about this topic.
Okay. Thanks, Soren. Um, thanks, I do, Member Vickers, uh, do you have any board requests? You have to unmute, Member Vickers.
Trying to keep the background noise away from you guys. It has to do with uh, comments on communication. And so responding to that, I, I have said before that I feel that we use many, many mediums to communicate and that the information can be found. But in this case, uh, my request is that we overdo it and get the information right out there to the parents and to the students uh, grade six through 12, that we reaffirm the start date on the 23rd and the information of what the changes in the two plans are for Thurston and the high school and the addition of the small group. And I think that additional time in the afternoon was also an increase and a, and a, and a new, and new offering to students. I, I guess I would use an old fashioned term, but let's bend over backwards to make sure that we don't have someone say, no one reached out to me, no one communicated, we're left out here struggling and not knowing what to do. So if we just uh, do a heavy communication, that's, that would basically be my request. The other is there was some um, query made to me of teachers utilizing their classrooms for the teaching they're doing now. And so just to uh, restate to teachers for the next four weeks, if they're having difficulties from wherever they're choosing to teach, that they have, I know they've been encouraged to use their classrooms at the school sites. And so, because I've just had that passed on to me, some technological issues and that, whether it's related to uh, where they're choosing to teach from, but I know that uh, for me, I agree with what our students said. I think our teachers are working hard and they're doing their best. And so uh, if we could just pass that on, it's not technically a request, it's just a reminder that if they're struggling in any way, they have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Vickers. Um, I would think that every board member has a consensus on overcommunication. I would think, I see nods, so there's consensus on overcommunicating. So our parents have different avenues to get the information, so, okay.
If you just divide up the student directory and start contacting.
Consensus. There are a thousand families, so. I'm not, Board Member Normandin?
Could, could be, or, could be like contact tracing, except it's dialing out to tell them information. I didn't wanna, uh, I didn't want to say that comments from the student board reps tonight were the most empathetic, heartfelt comments. I, I had to take my video off, not because of my kids for a second, just to wipe my eyes of just, my heart grew there. It was a beautiful um, from both of you to, to really see both sides of, or all the sides, there's more than two, right? Just be able to see and hear all of these points of view and um, to, to hold them all equal. And that was a, that was beautiful. And I think uh, watching you do it, I'd continue to model that. The world will be a better place. So I know that's not a request, but I want to, want to slide in there. Tomorrow is the revision 2020 challenge success. All parents, if they signed up around that, should have gotten an email and relations to it, it's tomorrow 11 AM. That goes over the social, emotional and, and talks about all that. Um, so hopefully parents did, they could just go out to challenge success and RSVP for tomorrow 11 AM. Um, and that is not a request either, but I do have one request. Um, regarding the district's victory over Member Perry's lawsuit against us, I'd like to have our council advise us on whether costs and fees are recoverable. Um, it was a frivolous lawsuit that Member Perry lost, and I think the tax payer should be reimbursed for the expenses that had to be spent to defend the district against her suit. She's also filed to appeal, so um, that'll be more money. But as a reminder for the public, because more people are listening, Member Perry had leaked confidential information. Um, and then uh, in, in turn sued us. Um, anyways, but I would just want to make sure, I know we can't talk about, but there's some consensus because I want Dr. Valoria to look into it. But not if it was just my request, so.
I would support that. Recovering costs, I'll stick with that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all. Just, thanks, thank you, Peggy, because I don't think anyone tells you, thank you for running these meetings and looking at us and all our little Zoom boxes and finding us. And, and just flowing with us. And the fact that when the caller called in was losing her her ability to speak and for all of us, you just always have our back and you
That's kind, Carol, thank you.
We know you're there to catch us, so thank you.
Um, I have no request, but I do want to say I'm so impressed with Johanna and Soren. And sometimes I'm in the throes of this COVID global pandemic and I'm surprised at people's opinions. opinions, but you had a really compassionate, um, view of every opinion. I'm, I'm a mom in my own house. I have my opinion and my experience. But I also work with the leaders at this district that I know are working, working their tail off to try and figure out how to accommodate. We're not gonna please everybody. We have a thousand families. They're all experiencing something different. I don't want any kids to be suffering, but I do, I'm sorry, people are upset. I, I think some people are doing all right. I think there's as many families as there are, there's a variety of experiences. And I think we just need compassion in that. I have no requests. I do have to announce that our next meeting, our regular business meeting is November 19th, 2020. And our, uh, we do have a special meeting, uh, next week regarding existing litigation on October 28th. We need a motion to adjourn, please.
Go boot.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Uh, Board Member Roll Call to Adjourn, oh, wait, Johanna?
Yes.
Thank you, Johanna. Um, and Board Member Roll Call to Adjourn. Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? I think she said yes. She's muted. I, she said yes. President Wolf? You went out of order and I say yes, so- I was looking for unmuted people. You're so funny. Motion carries 5:0. We are adjourned and it is 9:34. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the attendees. An apology to the two people we could not hear for public comment. Have a good night. Thank you.